James Nacita.
Daphne West.
Francis.
I did this way.
Oh, wow. Nancy Krachar.
Dan Brentlaw.
If you see that out there.
Thank you very much, and Lloyd Purdy. And before we, or the first item on our agenda is to ask if any commissioners have items that we should be placed on any future agendas.
I'd like to raise something in just some folks thought on it. A while back, there was some email requests and phone calls going around about perhaps drafting an ordinance in Oregon City on big box stores. And how we can appropriately manage interest of big box stores in Oregon City without having them be detrimental for our sets of places.
I believe that when we talked about that, we had Dan Brentlaw respond, which I'll ask him to do it again, because we specifically put some old requirements in place.
Right now, in our urban renewal area, the zoning is mixed use downtown. And any freestanding building over 60,000 square feet requires a conditional use permit, which requires a public hearing. And then we also have design standards as part of the review of a building like that, where we have requirements for transparency. And setbacks, buildings seem to be, I think it's five feet within the right of way.
What you've mentioned in the urban renewal area, but I suppose if it'd be such stores built anywhere in the city.
Yeah, I think the only district where you do not need a conditional use permit is the general commercial, is that right?
Yeah, so, but standing beyond this, the conditional use permit process, which would be applicable in mixed use corridor, mixed use downtown, mixed use corridor one, mixed use corridor two. You have that 60,000 square foot threshold on a building becomes a conditional use. But then we also have site line design review standards that are very prescriptive in terms of amount of transparency, location of front door relative to the street. I believe I've written a memo that was forwarded to you, Commissioner, to see outlining what protections we currently have in the code. And then I also gave a couple examples of something we could look at. We also have a section that deals with large retail, which is over 10,000 square foot. So, this is really the first time, I think, I've talked with the whole commission about this, but if it's something they're interested in and pursuing, we certainly could. As I said, I've drafted a memo to Commissioner Nacita outlining what exists in our code today in terms of protections and requirements. I'm not sure if that was forwarded on or not.
I think the whole commission got that, the one from Tony.
I did, I know.
Pardon?
Memo, this is memo, sounds familiar.
I did remember, but it could have been at a meeting in June when I was gone, when I brought this up. I don't remember that.
Yes, and one of the things I might suggest is that we could bring that memo to the next work session. And also just to have Tony walk you through what we currently got. This morning, we had a meeting with Dave Leland, who's doing workforce on those two sites in the urban renewal district. And talking about a bifurcated procedure where there might be higher restrictions. Sometime there are an access or request for public money to help the project move forward, there could be yet another layer of review. And so he's working on some things to bring to you and to the Urban Renewal Commission on that front. So that would give even more protection if public dollars were going to be expended. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't just have the conversation as a sort of tutorial, you know, where we're at right now. And then if you want us to go back and make some of the changes Tony's talking about, we can certainly put that on future council.
Yeah, I would be in favor of, adding that, is there someone else? Now, not to an agenda, I think it'd be good to inform ourselves and be able to ask questions in the informal setting. So, thank you. Others?
Well, I just wanted to piggyback onto that, but before we do go too far in that direction, that I'd like to hear away in from planning commission. They probably know in depth more of this than, on those ordinances, and what they had in mind.
Well, we wouldn't be proposing probably any ordinance changes on the next workshop, only an informational presentation that wouldn't require council action. Then if you want to give us direction to explore changes in ordinance, naturally, we would recommend going through the planning commission with those.
Yeah, I would like to hear the cause of conservation easement.
Conservation easement.
Review which part of it?
Well, really, my concern is to the issue where the property owner maintains conservation easement and what conditions under which we can have easement removed.
Are there others who wish to have that added to the agenda as well? Interesting, what else?
I mean, I can bring specifically what my concerns are.
Do you want to talk with Nancy?
I mean, are they going to have a study session or not, is that the question?
Yeah, that's the question, we haven't resolved that one yet.
Okay, so, I think some of my concerns. The most we'll have is development, for example, maybe they're going to get a greater density and in the process create a conservation easement. If lands are worthy of conservation easement, then I presume they're either suitable wetland or upland, have upland habitat characteristics. And if they in fact get issued a density and then some owner wants to remove it so they can develop that piece of land, I don't think it meets the criteria I would like to see in conservation easement.
If through a land use process, we're given a density transfer, it's not revocable.
Okay, well, in either case, if somebody wants to do it, I think we've got to guarantee that it's, you know, it's an area that's worthy of preservation. I don't know what discuss the conditions under which they can remove these.
If it's through the city, and if it's part of a land use process to transfer density, I can't think of a situation where we would remove it unless the city.
But state wasn't transferred density and the property is then sold.
They did it voluntarily?
Yeah.
Well, if it's voluntarily, the city's not involved. So, if I own, if I own people property and I want to put a conservation easement on my property voluntarily, I don't do that. That agreement is for, it's not to the benefit of the city. So, we would not be a party to that decision. Now, if they came in through a land use process, let's say, or, and then we were to be a part of that and then see something through our land use process because of that easement, then we would be in a situation where we're a party to it, and it would not be revocable unless it came back through the city and agreed to remove that. Because it would be a benefit to the public, of which we were part of. So, we've got two different processes. I can go down to the tax assessor and record a conservation easement right now on my property, and it has no, the city has no say in that. So, there's two different types that you could do that. But if we're involved, then I'm very comfortable that if we do get easements, you can't just walk in the next day and have them removed. I'm not sure if that.
I'm sure, well, there's a process that we should have to remove.
After it's been through the land use process?
Yeah.
I'd have to look into that.
Would you have to amend, would you have to amend the plan?
You'd have to amend the land use process because you've received density for the easement.
And to amend the plan, you'd have to go through the same zoning requirements unless some of our zoning requirements are changed.
This is where I'm not seeing any need to stay further, okay? Any others?
We had placed an item on a future work session agenda to talk about waste to energy facilities and potential. And I, we also talked about my meeting with the city manager and staff on preparing for that work session. I just wanted to remind David, I'll be touching base with you on that next of the days. One other, last week, I'm sorry, August 26th, I drove out to Arlington for an organ department environmental quality public hearing on a proposed demonstration, Plasma Art, God's Witness, City. And I met some of the folks with S4 Energy Solutions, a startup and Ben that's developing this on this management company. And I wanted to sound out my fellow commissioners on, as part of that work session, would you be interested in hearing from maybe two or three private developers of various types of waste to energy technologies, and I mean, there are a number of them. But I found it very useful to talk to both the private industry people and, you know, the DEC regulators on this matter. When I went to Arlington, it was quite a fascinating discussion. And I wanted, just wanted to see if you're interested in having maybe two or three of these industry folks who have different technologies come and talk about how their particular process or procedure works on its feasibility.
I would like to suggest that you run that by urban renewal, because I think that that would be very appropriate for all members of the urban renewal commission to hear that. And wondering if you want to hold that over till after the first of the year?
I don't want to hold it off till the first of the year, but I don't mind raising it. Well, let me just get some clarification from you. Are you talking about a separate work session of the urban renewal commission, or having it as an, or having it as an agenda item of the urban renewal commission?
Yeah, I am. Whether we did it as a joint work session or a special, but I would, I think it would be appropriate to include.
But it's your nature to do it.
I think that would be kind of mission.
Well, if in that percentage, it might be worthwhile having a separate, you should just send information. I saw that.
Yeah, because it sounds like it might be long.
It would be pretty detailed and complicated.
Just to alert you too, the next couple of sessions with both the city commission and urban renewal commission are pretty heavily related. And so, the benefit is you've got lots of time to plan to get your folks here, because. Yeah, I'm just saying that you're going to have a very heavy agenda in the next eight to eight weeks, so just sort of keep that.
We'll work on scheduling it up and put it where we can. Okay, that's it. All right, moving on to the discussion, the first discussion I have this evening is to hear a presentation about the city county insurance operations and how that works with our city. And who's doing that?
When Matt McNair from City County Insurance Services presented the presentation.
Welcome.
And commissioners, thank you for the invitation to come and speak. My name is Lynn McNair, I'm the executive director of City County Insurance Services, CIS in the Joint Self-Insured Trust. It is a public entity created by the League of Oregon Cities, of which Oregon City is a member, and the Association of Oregon Counties. We serve only Oregon cities, counties, and the public entities that the cities and counties create. There's a real limited scope. What I've prepared for you is a piece of information about our history, how we're formed, how we work. But I'm here as much to answer any questions that you have, so please feel free to interrupt me as you see fit. As you see, cities and counties are at the top of the pyramid here. And one has to be a city or county member of the league or the association to be part of CIS, as we're known for. LOC and AOC created CIS under an intergovernmental agreement in Oregon Chapter 190. And cities and counties have the authorization to do this joint self-insurance. And at the bottom of that slide, I've listed the different sections of the ORS that gives you the authority to do what you're doing and to jointly self-insure. And this activity is exempt from the insurance codes specifically to allow you to do what you're doing as local governments getting together to do what you would normally do on your own. The statutes also provide some protections generally for pools, which is what we're called, in having some real specific requirements for how much participation you have to have, how much reserves you have, if you have an actuary check out to make sure you're doing things the right way and not underestimating your claim. So, we indeed comply with all of those statutes. CIS has been around since 1981, will be celebrating our 30th anniversary next year. The League and AOC were actually active in insurance a long time before that, though. The city benefits program, EBS, began in 1958, and AOC began its own benefits trust in 1960. In 1981, they were creating CIS, and the three of them combined in 1993 to the program that exists today as the CIS trust, which covers benefits, property, liability, and workers' compensation. Our board of trustees is 10 members, it comes from around the state, and it is appointed by the LOC and AOC boards. The boards of directors of those organizations choose our board of trustees. And there are four city, four county board members, plus the executive directors of LOC and AOC. And you can see who those board members are. They have been, they have various degrees of experience with us. Jeff Rassason is our newest trustee, he began on September 1st. Kent Taylor from McMinnville has been on our board since 1983. CIS is organized with LOC, AOC members at the top, and of course, there's a subset of LOC, AOC members who are CIS members. 95% of the cities in Oregon are members of CIS. Right now, the only four cities that don't have any coverage with us at all are the self-insured, Portland, Eugene, Salem, and Netford. And so, we are organized, the board appoints my position, and I in turn am responsible for the rest of the staff. And you can see how we are organized, both by benefits and property casualty, and then by the administrative functions. When we talk about self-insurance, yes, you are self-insured with CIS broadly, but there is a limit to that. And above that, we purchase reinsurance. This is the liability program, reinsurance structure. CIS self-insures the first 500,000 of any claim, up to $1 million. NLCU Tool Insurance Company, which is a pool of pools essentially, takes the next 500, and then above that amount, Munich Re, which is an A-plus rated reinsurer, takes the next amount. And then members can buy in excess of 5 million per occurrence to up to $10 million. The property program is similar, CIS takes the first 500,000, and then there are RSUI, an A-rated reinsurer, takes up to $500 million of coverage per occurrence, a lot of money. And there are different limits for flood and earthquake, 100 million that RSUI takes, and then Lloyd de London has another 100 million over that. And then individual members, we have a shared limit of that 200 million for earthquake. All members have 5 million, and then members can buy more, and as you see, Oregon City has chosen to purchase $15 million of coverage that is available to you.
If I may, I'm just kind of curious about the background of this. Is this a result of our history with the 96 and 64 flooding that we have gotten? Is this only the 15 million that we have coverage, is that only for earthquakes, or?
It's for flood and earthquake.
And flood?
Yes.
Okay, and that is, do you know, or does anybody on staff know whether that's a result of the 64 and 96?
I honestly don't know how long you've had that coverage. You know, each city kind of chooses its own level to cover.
Is this for the senior properties, is that it?
This is for your property. We are not an insurance company, so we don't have probably heard AM Best ratings for insurers. When I say Munich Re is an A-plus company, and that means that AM Best has financial stability that is probably among the highest. But we still want to know how we compare with insurance companies, because the same kinds of things you would be concerned about, how financially stable is the company, applies to your own pool, and so, how well do we rank? So, Standard Analytical Service, they're a company out of St. Louis, does that kind of evaluation. They look at the top 25 insurance companies in the United States. And then they take, they took our financial data, they took other companies' financial data, and look at it and compare it in the same way to those companies. And so, we just had this completed, they did this study for us. And you'll see on the next page that they find that CIS compares very favorably with the top 25 insurance companies in the country, and their names, I'm sure you'll recognize, with solvency in terms of how our invested assets are available to meet the needs and emergencies. And you see there, we have a pretty high ratio, that's because our investments are the same as your kinds of investments. We follow the local government requirements for investing, so we don't have money in stock, we don't have, our money is in the local government investment pool and other secure investments. Our surplus premium is in a very good range, as are our surpluses to losses. So, I think you can feel comfortable that CIS is financially sound and able to meet the needs of all of our members should that catastrophic occasion arise. The question was put to us, how is CIS different from an insurance company? And I'm really not going to go through all of the details. On the left side is a description of how CIS is structured, our ownership, which is by members, who participates, how what our governance is like, and a little bit about the breadth of our coverage. And without trying to compare to any particular insurance company, our property casualty trust manager, who is a former broker, filled out the right pad of the table for me, because he has had more experience with companies not CIS that offer coverage to public entities. And we believe, and I think correctly so, that our coverage is the broadest, because it simply is aimed at all of those things that a city does, and trying to meet those needs and continually expanding it. This year, we just added a limited pollution liability coverage. And pollution is one of those things that insurance companies tend to stay away from, but we recognize that in certain situations, a city or county may be caught with a situation that they need to deal with, and we added that coverage at no additional charge, essentially.
Who is the discovery report, Mike?
Yes.
What is the report?
Everything, everything under the Oregon tort claims act.
So, you represented this, you were toward, as long as you've been a member.
I know the city's been in and out, currently been in, I think, since '97. And in general, very few exclusions, and we think a lot of value-added services, particularly our pre-loss legal program, which allows city officials to call these, our staff attorney, on any employment issues, and hopefully get good advice to avoid a claim as you go through a disciplinary action or termination. We were asked to go through a little bit about what happens when a claim is made, the process that we go through, how it's received, the coverage determination, is it something? And coverage determination in this case usually means, was the city in our program at the time the claim occurred? The investigation begins, and there is a determination of liability, because just because somebody accuses you of doing something doesn't mean that the city was negligent or is at fault, so that liability determination takes place then, the adjuster will use it. If it can be resolved, we can do it. Sometimes it needs to go up to the claim's manager supervisor if it's a higher dollar value. There may be litigation, and we will go through that process. And at some point, the claim is closed. You notice that the member is in the middle of that situation, and in part because we do try to touch base with the member at all stages during the course of a claim. The benefits of membership in CIS is a long document, because we think there are a variety of benefits of membership. Many of them around coverage, as we've talked about so far, the fact that we do a significant amount of risk management, provide risk management services, our pre-loss legal, our law enforcement consultation, really trying to focus on those things that will help you avoid claims. We define risk pretty broadly as just about anything that can get in the way of a city being able to fulfill its mission to its constituents. So, you need your resources to meet your constituents' needs. To the extent that we can help you avoid claims and spend your money that way, you are better off. So, that's how we try to focus our risk management services, and we're continually expanding those services as we understand what members need. We have, in fact, I'll be announcing this week, two committees, a benefits advisory committee and a CIS trust advisory committee. They are member committees who meet with us a couple of times a year, and any member can attend. Did you tell us what we're doing well, what we can be doing differently? If we have ideas about new programs and services, we run it by this committee. And sometimes they say, gee, that's a great idea, and other times they say, eh, don't bother, it's really not useful to us. So, we depend on that feedback to improve our services all the time.
Could I ask you a question about the health coverage? I think our insurance of our city employees are through private groups. And I'm just wondering, is your health coverage like a separate insurance policy for workers, like staff employees of city governments?
It is another pool. It's, you know, it's separate from the property casualty pools. CIS benefits, it's medical, dental, life, disability, the same kinds of coverage that you would buy from private insurer. Has been, our medical coverage has been insured by regions. Currently, it is self-insured, we just want self-insured, but regions is still the administrator. ODS is the administrator of our dental program. Our life and disability are through the Hartford, so they're similar to the other coverages that you would buy. I mean, I'm covered as a CIS employee, and there are, I'm going to say, about 11,500 employees in the state of Oregon who.
And is it going to have to go through and buy several, and obtain insurance for a group where many employers or individual employees come and sign up for it?
No, it is for the city itself. You might have one bargaining unit, for example, that would come in our program and others not, but generally, it is done through the city as opposed to individual employees. We recently added what we're calling the CIS Risk Network. It is an online training program, and it is completely free to members, although there are other courses, our computer training that the company we partnered with offers that are, have a small fee. And so, to the extent that it would be beneficial to your employees to take these courses without having to go anywhere, and these are the initial programs that we have started with, we'd encourage you to do that. We also are developing our risk management library. We had one, decided to try to improve it so that city officials can get the information they need pretty much 24/7. And I've just included a little bit of information about your coverage, to the extent that you are. to the extent that you are aware of this. Your contacts for the risk management consultant and your underwriter, these are the folks who are on our contact list. And I've also included some overview information about the claims the city has had over the past few years. And there, you want to see how you compare with other members of the pool, there's a good comparison in any given year where that's gone. So that was general liability, there's also auto liability and property and auto physical damage. And then the total contributions, that's another way of saying premium that the city has paid over the past five years for all of your coverage with CIS. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay, any questions, Doug?
I'm just curious, apparently four members of the board, I read that. It seems like there's broad leadership, in terms of who they add on the roster. This mechanism, that is how do they determine who goes into the pool as like from, and also there's term limits on what matters?
There are not term limits. And they usually put out information, you know, when they seek, I've seen it in Local Focus, the league magazine, looking for appointees. Generally if there is, you know, and I'm not involved in their, their day-to-day operation, although I used to work for the league before I came to CIS. The, I think they seek appointees generally if they are pleased with the service that one of our board members has had and that board member wants to continue. They, they have generally continued that person's service, but they, I think they recruit like they do for any other position at that point. I think you were the one that asked, did you get all your questions answered?
Yeah, I have one question, Ms. McNamara. When you mentioned the training that C, CIS offers, I'm familiar with a lot of the training and the safety portions in particular, but I'm wondering, because it seems to me like an increasing number of claims statewide, and this could just be my perception rather than a reality, but are somehow related back to ethics in the workplace for employees whom you have challenged with situations that aren't always black and white or easily, easily understood? And I'm wondering if any of the training is focused on ethics or if CIS can, can sort of design training around a claim system and customize it for an individual member?
Mr. Prather, the answer is, the second question is yes, absolutely. And I think I would encourage you to reach out to Donnie Zorinson, who is management consultant, because he would be happy to work with you and kind of do a claims review and then work together to see what would be most beneficial. We are not ourselves offering ethics training, but we do partner with the legal board in cities. And I think the Ollie program has an ethics training program this year, but don't hold me to it without looking at their website.
Yeah, I, I have the state, the league-sponsored course a couple of years ago, and it's focused almost exclusively on ethics laws that pertain to every lunch under $50.
As opposed to ethical decision making.
That's not a big problem for most of our employees and it doesn't lead to many of the claims. But I, I will contact Mr. Zorinson. I have some suggestions actually I might even want to discuss with you.
That'd be terrific. I'll give you a call if that's a call.
Yes, a related question, if the tort claim is directed to an employee and not necessarily to the city, the presumption is the city, that will take on the tort claim?
That's what the, the tort claims act says. And, and again, it depends, there are lots of things that make it a difference of whether or not, you know, was the employee acting within the scope of either her responsibilities as opposed to is the city employee doing something? And, and some of those cases are dancing. Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much for having me coming and organizing it for us. Let's move on to the next report, which is from the Carnegie Task Force. So Scott Archer, who has been kind of directing that process.
Here in our commission, at your July 13th reception, the, actually the task force and the consultants gave you the, basically presented you with their final report and recommendation, which I know you've seen it, but I attached it again to your agenda tonight, I'm sure you had that. The, pretty extensive review of the process and all of that. So I won't go over that again tonight, but basically just as a, just to kind of come back to what the recommendation was and then, and then to talk about really what, what I'm seeking from tonight is a discussion from you or just some direction in terms of where you'd like to go with this recommendation and how you'd like to proceed. The, the outcome of the, of the task force recommendation was that, what the final recommendation, all the consideration was, was that the city continue to operate, or operate the Carnegie Center as a, as a multi-use and they specifically called it the Oregon City Arts and Cultural, Oregon City Arts and Culture Carnegie Center. And the recommendation was based on all of the different things that they fleshed out and I've kind of listed a few of those in the, in the written staff report. Basically, and I'm looking at point number three under their recommendation, and this is just excerpted from their, from their recommendation, that the consensus that a multi-use arts and culture facility is the best long-term use, the least, they considered, basically they considered three different models as to how this might operate. The least favored model to operate and manage that center would be just a strictly city-owned and operated model. And that would be not favored due to 100% of the burden being on the city. The, the next least favored model is solely a nonprofit or a private group operating and running the facility. And that's because of the instability of nonprofits to be able to really to hold things together. I think we've seen some, unfortunately, some recent examples of that. The, therefore their recommendation is what they, they termed a hybrid model, which was a combination of, of the city working with the management of the facility and operation of the facility, but working with a partner nonprofit group of some type. Now that could be, that could be an existing nonprofit group that would be willing to take this on. I, I don't know specifically if there are already, that are willing to do that. And again, I think because of the state of working grass, a lot of nonprofits are struggling right now. And so most are not probably willing to stretch their, their resources or their capabilities. More likely, what, what they discussed and what they've recommended is, is the likeliest scenario would be that the city would, would work with the community or would, would help to form a nonprofit organization specifically to support this structure that they've recommended. So, so again, without rehashing all, all of the report and all the details, I'll let you ask the questions. But bringing this back to you tonight because we, you received that presentation and basically we're seeking the direction. There, there was recognition that the, the model that they're recommending for operating the Carnegie Center under this proposal is going to still be of some financial burden to the city. There is, even though it's not 100%, and that's why they've recommended this hybrid, the task force, the consultant and staff all recognize that this still does create some, some type of financial burden, but they, they propose this type of model to, you know, really to offset that. So I think that's kind of what, what I wanted to sort of put back in front of you and let you contemplate. And I, and I really, again, just seeking where, where would you like to go? I know there's a lot to digest with this report and with this, with this process. Another thing before I stop talking and let you respond is, of course, as everybody knows, the, the library is, is the current tenant of the building. And any decision to, to do something to the effect of what the recommendation is or other direction that would possibly come from the commission is impending timeline of, of, of the library being moved. So with that, I guess I just want to kind of throw that back and, and let you ask me the questions that I think, that you think you need follow-up on or really was hoping just to get the conversation started with you on this and recognizing that this, this may take more conversation than just tonight, but at least if we can get that started.
Doug, Mr.?
No, I can understand why you'd maybe want to go to the hybrid model, there's a city facility and I think sort of things aren't working, it's probably easier to book or other ways to direct it. In fact, this is more indirectly involved in. I guess the hard thing I'm going to have putting my arms around is, and I realize we have an independent study coming up on the fair interpretive center, but we really, it's pretty similar, they're kind of in the same general ballpark. And really the current staff we have is, is pretty, is pretty well committed to specific activities and trying to figure out how we're going to do that, whether we're going to bring in an individual that we deal in some manner, fashion or other with all three facilities or something. I think that's something that we're happy to be thinking about, how we go about it. We don't, at this point, we don't have to do a record.
I'd like to step in here. It, yes, I'm piggybacking on what you said, that we, we have, we have problems. And the good news is that we have three consultant reports, including the New York territory. They've had a consultant report, which is not our facility, they're very much related. And then we have Carnegie Center, and then we have Interpretative Center. All three essentially closed, except for the library. And it seems to me that the next, and all of the consultant reports have said, too much, too many, too big, no money. It's a nutshell. And so it seems to me that there needs to be a convening by some entity that has the authority to bring all those groups together to talk about the reconfiguration. There is not, not one, not one of the consultants has said that any of them are sustainable. Not one consultant has said that they're the right size. And not one consultant has, has recommended that they continue in their current configuration. So I think unless we say of all three consultants across, I think there's a lot of value in believing what, what they say and has an awful lot of overlap in those three consultant reports. And, and I don't think all the consultants, but some consultants consulted with each other as well and gave us national models to look at for those facilities. So it seems to me that the solution that will work is to, is to convene. And again, I'm not positive who, who should do that. Be grateful to the city, we don't, we don't necessarily have the authority to, to tell the county what to do, but perhaps it could be co-convene. But anyway, it seems to me there need to be part of a group that sits down with the community and all the facilities need, need to bring to the table what they can to reconfigure because it seems to me that that's what we're being told. And so to continue on a, you know, a path forward without considering those other sister organizations, I, I think would be probably the wrong path right now. Doug?
I think I basically agree with you in terms of probably our, obviously heritage size. I think probably every city has some sort of an arts cultural related facility and I, I don't know whether we should simply say that this specific idea is specifically the city's responsibility. Of course, we can't bring in ideas from other sources and other agencies, but in the case of, seeing the broad base of even the Urmitainer, definitely at the end of the fail to purpose, I can see a real benefit.
Others? Doug?
Well, I think that you summed it up quite honestly, Anne Norris, there, that too much, too many, with no money. And even though the city owns two of the facilities, I, I agree with you 100% that in order for any one of them individually or collectively to succeed, we need all the arts and heritage groups in our community to work together on this one. And I think it is, I think it is a joint thing and not a single building by building. Because that's, well, we're all in this together and we all want to succeed. So I, I think that kind of meeting would be great. I don't know what the format or, like you said, who's convening it. I, I would be amenable to a large meeting like that.
Rocky?
And I agree with that as well. I guess one of, there's so many other things to talk about. This is, is, I don't even feel like I can even say what I want to say or, or at least even have enough in my, enough in my idea even what to, what to say. We're still got, we still have the task force going forward with the interprets in their buildings. And so that's not quite complete yet, but I think they know, you know, pretty much where it's headed, yeah. So for me, I'm kind of starting back at scratch again in my head and, and thinking about things that haven't been thought about. One of the things that I think definitely should be looked at, at the city level is how we, especially with the Carnegie Center. You know, the Carnegie Center was really the heart of the city. When the Carnegie Center closed, it had a huge effect on Seventh Street, on our parks and rec programs, on, on everything. It really affected a lot of the core of the city. I see also the community schools at Eastham and us, you know, in the process of buying the Eastham building for the library. I've always said, since I've been on commission, that we have never taken advantage as a city of the school district in terms of partnerships. And I, I think that's important. And, and I think that it's time that we really start thinking about that broader. When I, when I say that the city and the school district should partner in some way, usually the first response is, well, the city has no responsibility to take care of the school district. I don't see it that way, I see the school district taking care of the city. And, and what I mean by that is you have a building such as the Carnegie Center where, you know, my, my belief too is that it, it's going to have to be some kind of a hybrid model that, that makes it successful. The city can't do it on its own and probably any one organization can't do it on its own. But we have, every senior in high school has to do senior projects. We have huge requirements for students at our school district for volunteer hours, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know why we aren't funding, or at least in part, let's say the Carnegie Center, the staff person, that can utilize and partner with the school district to have the entire facility run by students, you know, putting up art shows, selling coffee, whatever it is, whatever that building becomes. These students are practically constantly looking for partnerships in the business community and the community as a whole to fulfill all these requirements. And that's not an easy thing for hundreds and hundreds of kids to do. So why aren't we taking advantage of that as a city? And, and, and working, you know, on that? I, I think there's a real possibility there. You know, yes, it's going to not be something that we as a city can probably deal with on our own, but I think that discussion should take place, we should at least start thinking about it because it may not just help with the Carnegie Center, it may help with buildings beyond that. And so, you know, community schools right now is in the process of doing a lot of community education classes. They're almost replacing parks and rec as I remember it to some degree because they're doing so many other things and offering it community-wide, and that's it. So there should be a partnership more so I think with parks and rec and community schools. And, and maybe that's, maybe that's a possibility. And I think other, you know, nonprofits can... And I think other, you know, nonprofits can be drawn into that as well to, to make that building flourish. So I, I think we need to, I, I think we need to take these, these consultant reports and I will, I, I guess I have a difference of opinion in the sense that all the consultant reports are saying we have to do something different, one of the consultant reports is saying we should do exactly the same thing. And so I think we know that that's not going to happen, I think we have to look at some things differently, and I think we have to think about what haven't we tried? And, and go from there. But it's, it's just the beginning and it's going to be a long time until we get this all resolved.
Rocky, if I just make correct one, the thing you said, we do partner with the school district.
Absolutely, not enough.
Okay, you said you did not, so I just wanted to make sure.
Not in the way that I'm talking.
Oh, you're, you're promoting it a different way, yeah, but.
I mean, the construction classes, I mean, we do a lot of.
But we do joint fields, scheduling of our fields, we, the, one of the coolest things I think that we did in the school district was the teen dances, and that really, we provide the SRO, no cost, the school district, since they weren't able to put any money, the resource officer, the police academy that, the police department runs this joint, and then community schools too, and we do do a bunch of senior projects through our parks department. So just wanted to let that, let go and said, okay, Daphne?
Oh, I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Smith, for the different perspectives from adding the school district. You know, I, I'm familiar with all the things that we do partner with them, but there's always room for more ideas, that's a great partner to bring to the table, and especially because, you know, as Eastham becomes a library and community schools goes out, so it goes to the high school right here now, but we have something to mutually benefit from all this, so I really thank you for that observation bringing to the table.
Okay, so the question remains. What's that noise?
We must close down.
Oh, okay, thank you. So the question remains then, what do we want to recommend to staff that we, that we do? We don't have money, but it is.
Do we have it? Go ahead, Daphne. Do we have anyone currently interested in doing something, or any proposals on the table for any nonprofits or art groups or anything?
I have to answer that a little carefully, because I, the answer is kind of no, but, but there have been some, there have been some organizations that have sort of casually formally contacted us. I've, I've heard from some, some different groups here and there, but, but it's been very kind of limited discussion and, and, and really kind of tied back into the, we tried to tie those back into what was going on with the task force, so nothing really, I guess what I'm trying to say is nothing really concrete in terms of those types of discussions that's taken place, Commissioner, but.
Or, or did he have them come with money? Yeah, that's.
No, but, you know, I think, I think that possibility exists, I just really think though that organizations will be, will be constrained against how much they can do, which is what the, I think what the task force and the consultant recognizes, why they, why they recommend that the city, in order for this to really survive, you know, we can do the private partnership thing, but it's really got to be supported by the city. And again, you know, what that means, we haven't clearly defined that, the task force, what they took this from the direction that they heard from the commission when, when you directed this to go forth, and so, what they really heard was, give us a recommendation, and that's kind of where they stopped. And so they, you know, certainly, they may be interested in some further conversations with you about this, to take that idea further, but that's kind of where it sort of stopped, is where it's at. I think they wanted to leave the flexibility there for the discussion.
Jim?
I want to explore something with Scott, Nancy Hyde's not here tonight, so I think she might have some of the answers to some of my questions here to see whether what I'm thinking about is feasible or not. Scott, on, on the model you're proposing, I wondered if this would be acceptable within that framework, because it would involve a base level of funding, although I have no idea how much, and that's maybe something staff could afford, if the commission is interested in pursuing something like this. In conversations that I've had with citizens who have tapped me on the folder, you know, and whispered this or that idea in my ear about the Carnegie Center, one that I find interesting is, has to do with archives and, and citizen access to archives, as far as the cultural use of the Carnegie Center, you know, we're Oregon's first incorporated cities to have the history with the New York Territory, et cetera. And my understanding from a conversation I had with Nancy earlier in my tenure was that a lot of the significant historical archives of the city are kept off-site at a private archive facility somewhere, I don't even know where it is. And a lot of those taken out of, you know, the trailers in the back of the old city hall were also sent to this protected archiving site. Well, that's kind of inaccessible to, you know, the citizenry and researchers and scholars, and if one of, not, maybe not, you know, the only, but a base use of the Carnegie Center, if that could be a low central location for our historic archives that, you know, with the appropriate supervision could be accessed by citizens and scholars, we're paying that private facility something, you know, to, to safeguard and keep these archives in a, you know, climate-controlled facility. So that's already budgeted money that we're spending, and it seems to me wise to send it to a private third-party archive, you know, center, record center, where we could have the Carnegie Center host our historic Oregon City Archives and use the already budgeted money that we're taking, or we're taking offsite somewhere, to be kind of like the base level building block of funding for the, the maintenance and continuation of, of the Carnegie Center. Like, it wouldn't be the only use, but it would provide, it's, it's something we already have budgeted and we're spending, so why not send it to a home that we're.
If I may, I, a couple of comments to that, Commissioner, and to see that. Would it, would that type of use fit? It very well may, because what, what the, what the task force was very careful about was, was the, in their definition of the recommendation, the definition of the facility was, again, it's Oregon City Arts and Culture Carnegie Center, they were very specific about that, because they, they talked about what, what culture means, is it, is it different things? So part of that, what, where that might tie back to, from my recollection of the task force discussion, was there was also some discussion about potentially having that facility, at least in part, be possibly a historical research center, a, a genealogy library, and, and some things along that, kind of that, along the lines of that, so that might work from that perspective, fitting into the definition. Now, I don't want to speak for Nancy Hyde, and in terms of, I, I, I can't answer the question if that would work for an archive center for student records, I frankly don't know. I know that the, the company that we use to store our records has, you know, very secure and very climate-controlled and flood and fireproofed and all that, so I don't want to speak for Nancy tonight, I would have to, but as far as what we're, what we're talking about maybe fits within some of this, I, I, I think a piece of it, I, I would be comfortable speaking for the task force and saying yes. One thing I want to point out to the commission as well, I want to be very clear, is that this is the task force recommendation, not, not staff, we were, we were careful through the process not to, not to intercept the process or, or anything like that, we provided information, we helped facilitate the meetings, we helped facilitate the overlay to the consultant, their contract, and their, you know, their duties, make sure they care, but this is very much is the task force recommendation, so I just want to make sure that that point is made.
I'd like to piggyback on that too, that there definitely is community conversation about a possible geological center, archive center, that I guess, and a lot of people would like to see it, it can usually be a people place, I think that's in that task force recommendation as well. Most of our city records are on, online, and the, the things that are housed at the Historical Society and at our library are actually hard, hard copies of, of research, and we have one of the great premier centers of genealogy at the Historical Society also that, you know, could definitely fit. So to convene all of those resources together and figure out where they may, might fit, I still think is going to be, I think, necessary to be able to move, move forward, because part of the solution may be pieces of, pieces of things that, you know, you have multiple ideas, and I, and I like Rocky's idea of student, students run something or other, as long as they can figure out the supervision and goal for it, that kind of thing.
I have one more thing, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I guess, agree with the concept that's come up about the, the broad discussion with, with the community and whatever the other agencies or partners need to be involved in, in our historical and cultural facilities that we're, frankly, having a hard time funding, and, and I think, I think, you know, there, that, we are challenged and there is no, we don't have a particular financial solution, obviously, the, the report didn't come to you with any kind of a financial recommendation, and we're going to have another discussion a little bit later in the agenda about the Ermitah House, and I think with some different, with a different subject, we're going to be talking in the same context of what do we do with another historical center that, that's important, and how do we fund its, you know, preservation and maintenance, we'll get into that a little bit, but I think these all tie together, and then, and then next month at your, at your work session, we're bringing forward the consultant report recommendation on the, on the end of the fair slate, so yes, I, I just want to, from the staff, I just want to echo that we, we do need to have some type of conversation to that, whether it's to that nature, or, you know, just something that, that involves, you know, not just the city, but the community and how we, how we solve these issues, because I unfortunately don't have a lot of, we have a lot, we're presenting a lot of challenges in these issues, and we're not presenting a, a lot of financial solutions. There are, there are proposals as to what we, what, what we can do, but not financial, necessarily financial support to those proposals, that's one of the, one of the challenges that we're having, bringing these forward to you, is discussions without really good solutions on the finances.
Okay, Daphne? I, I was just remembering once we started talking about this, there's probably several performing arts groups in town that don't have a home either, and that they, whenever we have this discussion, that I hope they're brought to the table as well.
Jim?
Yeah, this is, this is. Anyway, the council has made, in terms of the partnership, at the library, when it was called the Library Reuse Committee for the Carnegie, an archival archive was being put forward by several people in the, in this neighborhood who've been involved in those kinds of things, but it, it seems to me that we're looking for partnerships, and not only partnerships of our facilities, partnerships of others, and I agree with the mayor that, that in fact, Clapton County Cultural Society Museum, at the museum, Oregon Territory, does have its own history piece, that's very good. And since Oregon City is the county seat, it is the county seat all the way back to the family, Clapton County, surrounded from the Atlantic River to the Continental Divide, and all the way from the Pudding River up to fifty-four, forty, forty-nine parallel, depending on which you felt was the boundary. The tie into Oregon City's history, even the current one, I think is a very pertinent piece for the county as the county seat, so I think we ought to look for that partnership, probably through the Oregon, the Museum of the Oregon Territory would be the, the best way to deal with, since there's a nice piece that we already have, there are volunteer expertise, expertise in this. I, I really like Rocky's idea, I, I think in terms of community school activities, arts courses that are available to the general public through the community schools, it's one of the best atmospheres that I think we have around for that kind of activity, and I think that's great. Like I said, I was always pleased with the, with the Latones Museum being there, but when they, when they remodeled it, it really, it really drew down to a point it could only serve really tots, whereas before it was really a preschool, even young, elementary students could come in there, that's why I think we should probably look to perhaps Eastham, connected to the Chubbles Library, to the Chubbles Museum at some point in the future. But I, I think for that specific activity archive, I think we ought to look for a partnership elsewhere, it doesn't mean it's not important, it's extremely important, and they're making access to the public, it is extremely important.
Okay, Daphne? Okay, last one. You know, we were talking at commission the other night about the Rivers and Cove project and polling, and perhaps since this is another community prioritization, we were going to pay for a poll, this would be another good thing. My question tonight is, why haven't we not talked about the anthrax station being in one of these facilities too, I mean, there's, you know, there's another one, so the, the anthrax station. Yeah, so why, you know, that's empty as well, so, but, you know, given the constraints, or budget constraints, what is this community's priorities and would that help groups want to work together and, you know, to figure this out, it's not just the city's.
Responsibility.
Yeah, the city's responsibility.
Is that still on there? Okay. All right, well, that's a certain good non-recommendation, so.
I was telling you, it's right over in the Urban Mill District anyway, aren't they? What, what, it's in the moat maybe?
No, it is, it's in Urban Mill. Actually, all of them are. I think so. Yeah, it goes beyond the Urban Mill Society, I believe, it's the end of Urban Mill District.
Dan, or, Dan D, is it moated in the Urban Mill?
Yeah, it's, it is. Okay, well, that was definitive, let's move on.
Yes.
It's an unsolvable thing, but it sounds like the majority opinion is that we need to convene a, an over, a, 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 some kind of stakeholder group to work on reconfiguration of, of our challenged Catholic spaces that were so important to our community, actually define our community, and they define it unfortunately negatively currently. Okay, the Economic Improvement District is a proposal from Main Street Oregon City, Dan, sure enough? Great.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, cheers. Now, this is the first extract of this call, Lloyd Purdy and the city have been working on the ball home, and it's, one of the reasons that's, well, the city has funded their district for Purdy's, it's part of the, not needed, that, that, that's why they're usually still looking at this as a way of, it's, going to, and improvement, and maybe it's, they're, 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 downtown, you know.
How's that? That's better.
So what we, let me, I think I'll talk a little bit about what an Economic Improvement District is, and then Lloyd will come up and talk a little bit about what he's been doing in terms of working with the business owners and introducing both a survey about what they'd like to see for improvements downtown, and also what sort of support you think we can get from the businesses downtown. Actually, Oregon has three cities that, that at least we've looked into that have pretty strong Main Street programs and financing through an EID, Baker City, Corvallis, and. Make sure you build this. So we've looked at a, a number of options, and the one that we're recommending is an assessment based on property tax assessment, and the Oregon statutes allow a maximum of 1% of property tax to go for this type of financing, that's the max, and Lloyd can talk a little bit more about this later, but he's actually run the numbers on three different alternatives, one at 1%, and then two others at a much lower percentage, so I hope you can go over those numbers. In terms of the process, it's really a two-stage process for setting up an EID, first is a, a public hearing with the city commission to establish an ordinance, and part of that ordinance, you have to establish what the improvements would be.
It looks like you're bringing it here, but I'd like to know that you definitely didn't survey your members on whether or which or what scenario they liked. Because to me, it's for property owners themselves and you know, what's the scenario that works for them? Or does it work in these times they really want to assess themselves?
Right. We have a property owner meeting scheduled for, I think it's Tuesday the fourteenth. Given this survey that came back from last week, that was the soonest I felt I could convene. Property owners, so we will be meeting with them noon, at noon, at in a Cypress restaurant on the fourteenth, which I think is that Tuesday. And any of them, any that show up are going to take part in this conversation. That's the day before, I think the next, that's the day before the.
Fifteenth.
The council meeting, according to Dan's schedule, I don't think we need to make a determination at that council meeting, I think. But there is some level of public noticing that would need to go on if. If this commission wants to move forward on this. I guess we would have it looks like until September.
On it? Get out a thirty day public notice?
Correct. So after the fourteenth, I will have some more input from, from property owners. And bring it back to you all at that point, or you can go and get that meeting. Or is there another way you want to see some more property owner input? I mean, the ones that want it and maybe the ones that don't will be at the meeting here behind me. If the council wants to move forward in this direction. If you all don't want to move forward in this, in this direction, then.
I think part of the reason for the meeting too was before Lloyd had that meeting, he wanted to make sure that the council was. Familiar and somewhat comfortable with the concept, not necessarily approving, but with the concept.
I'd like to express a concern about the emphasis on the property owners. There's a mention in this report about how the reality is that the property owners will pass along the costs of this to. Their renters and the renters in turn will pass along the costs to their customers. And without getting too global as far as this, because I mean, there's a lot of customers out there for people in downtown. But I'm concerned about the exclusive focus on property owners or not, the people who are renting in these properties who will have costs passed along. To them, and I'm just wondering when and where do they get their horse as far as this, since they will have rental increases, for example. As a result of this and this meeting again, I, and I mean, I'm hearing this force property owner with this like, you know, emphasis. And I've had, I've had, you know, business owners expressed concern about this, um, you're prone about that. And I don't know why the meeting that is the plan can't include anybody who wants to come. Including people who are renting in these properties and not just the property owners.
No, that's option.
What you're.
And the problem that the business owners didn't get to survey it seems. No, because we weren't, uh, we weren't going off of the concept of taxing or assessing a business owner. You can, the city could form a BID, a business improvement district, a tax on businesses, you already do that with one like through a business license. That would be another scenario to generate funding. Given what the state allows the city to do on this. And mind you, that's how I've been working is. You see property owners who have to, you know, with that thirty three percent threshold, no more than thirty three percent of the property owners. If more than thirty three percent of the property owners reject this idea about showing up here or assuming something right, then the project doesn't move forward. So there's within the state enabling legislation, there's no call for business owners to comment, but if you want to form a BID, we could, we could do that too.
I think I'm maybe somewhere in the middle. What I'm suggesting is that you're going to have a meeting. You know, where you're gauging the thirty three percent threshold of property owners. I don't see the harm of broadening and opening up that meeting so that other people can add their voice. Because other people have good ideas and concerns and I think, I think it would be only healthy to hear those other ideas and concerns as well.
Well, we can do a second meeting. I mean, I've noticed this meeting to my constituents, the property owners as a meeting for, for a downtown dialogue for property owners. If a second meeting invites more people to show up to hear input is, is, is a good idea, we can do that, there's no reason not to invite more comment. I do know that again and again, we've approached the business community about supporting what we're doing. And it results in not enough support, so while everybody wants to do a lot of great things downtown. The business owners don't seem to be, the willingness to pay is not there. The beauty of the EID is it makes sure that everybody pays something. Meaning the property owners to accrue the most benefit from their investment downtown as well as the business owners. And everybody pays something. So you're right, but by default, a business owner will absorb some of the cost of this program. That's the beauty of a concept like this, it's horizontally and vertically a little more equitable than relying on the city to support what we're doing. Or just four or five business owners to support or in property owners to support what we're doing. So I have no problem calling, inviting. A, a, holding a larger downtown dialogue, inviting anybody that wants to show up to participate in a, in a discussion about. This content, uh, we will in fact survey the business owners too, given the same, the same form. And I'd love to get public, you know, input from the downtown stakeholders about programs they feel are important. Given the state legislation, that didn't appear to be a necessary activity, but we can do that.
Just to clarify, so Lloyd, um, does he gauge the thirty three percent? Is it a parent at a meeting or actually like, you know, are you going to actually send out a ballot of some sort to the reg, you know, the, the property owners list on the investment files?
My understanding from the legal review, we've had, has anticipated in writing a, a contest in writing that they don't feel is appropriate. That would be a, a city, they'd have to contest to the city, the city is in charge of the public notice and of, uh, submitting that, that, uh, formal.
So you're actually, you're not asking folks if they favor. What the EID there, you're asking folks if they oppose it and they actually have the affirmative active duty to. Get out and register their opposition.
That's the way the state law is set up, that they have to, uh, the, the, the program would pass unless thirty three percent of the property owners in the area that you want to define in the boundary. Unless they formally submit objection.
And you formally did the boundaries, including ninety, ninety property owners at this point, but it could be different. It could be different.
It could, it's up to the council, I'm assuming they'll take the recommendation we all put together, uh, this is a picture on. So the boundaries can be changed, it's, uh, the boundaries we're using are based on the two years of experience serving downtown and who benefits the most from these kinds of service. So let me make sure I got to the question there. Yes, it's a petition for the objectors to. fulfill their duty to object, the way the state law is written.
Okay. And, and this may be a criticism of that state law. But the state law seems to almost create an incentive. Not to be too careful that everybody gets the notice.
Which is why I'm being very careful, every property owner gets.
No, the, the state law requires every property owner to get, yeah, so when you do like a. A real hard registered receipt mail, I mean, how do you, how do you confirm that every property is notified? How do you ensure that? Like.
We'll have to read it to the council, but it does say that they have to be notified. In fact, I've been testing that, uh, in free or communications with property owners, I've been testing the city's database for that district to make sure we don't have bounce backs. So given the constraints they have in our world, given the mail system that works. Of sixty six mailers, I saw now only two came back, which means within this district. We know someone's at that address and they're appearing to be a property owner. Some of them even have confirmed that through a survey. So that comes to entry questions.
I had several thoughts when I talked to Lloyd about this, I. One of the things I definitely want to find out about is, you know, what the property owners think, obviously, and that's, that's simply. Crucial, um, the other thing is, you know, by asking the property owners downtown. You know, they're really taking ownership of the program and, and what the future is going to be of that program. The thing that, that I had heard a little bit and, and, and one of the things that we've all seen happen in Oregon City is. Main Street come back. And then go away and then come back and go away and it's happened, you know, in my lifetime several times. Um, and I was telling Lloyd just to some degree, I think this is the highest that I remember seeing it in, in quite a long time and, and so. To lose where we're at right now, I think is, 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 is something we need to be careful with. So right now the city, you know, is, um, supporting this program and has committed to, to doing that. Well, I really think it's going to be key is that number, um, you know, if, if over thirty three percent comes back and says, no, this isn't going to happen. Then what's the next one? Um, what do we do then? If the number comes back and it's not drastic support, huge support, then what does that mean? And I, I think there are some discussions that we as a commission can have with that for instance, if it's not completely overwhelming, but it's obvious that there's not thirty three percent against it. That we can, you know, we as a city can decide whether we want to keep our commitment going forward in the main street program. Um, and one of my thoughts is it doesn't necessarily have to be completely the city stops their commitment with the main street program right now and, and. And ask the downtown business or downtown property owners to take full responsibility, it could be some sort of. You know, weaning off of that or, you know, the city continues to contribute a little bit or a little less each year as the, as the property owners take over it. Um, so that's a possibility. The other thing is, is obviously if the majority of. The people are, but the majority of this, if the majority of the property owners are against it or outside. On the, the edge, you know, I'm thinking, you know, right now the key programs on Main Street are really focused in that main core. And so let's say, you know, um. The property owners on the far end of the main street are against it, well, and they can shrink the, like the street, the area. So I, I definitely think, um, that this is a discussion worth having and I, I definitely think. Um, it gives us several scenarios on how to keep this program going and, um, also. Have the, the property owners kind of take full ownership of it and, 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 um, at some point. And, and then start looking at one of the questions that's come up and everyone, um, I think a lot of people talked about is. Other parts of our main cities, they, well, why is there such a focus on Main Street? Well, you know, right now, Main Street is Main Street's turn, um, and so this gives us the ability. Um, to move, I think, well, after, after we focus on Main Street, I think. The other parts of our main city are going to have is their comeback part of what's going to happen with. The library, I think is going to help bring Seven Street back, uh, in the future, and I think. Um, what's happening up on the level of Safeway is going to start doing that as well, so, so we're working from downtown out and, um. And I, I, I think that's important. So I, I'm anxious to see what the property, property owners say. And I, my hope is that the majority of them are supportive because it's definitely. Been great to see what's going on on Main Street and it's, it's, it's. Been a long time since I've seen Main Street, um, doing as well as it is and, and to, to say that in the economic times that we're in. The fact that there's so many new businesses coming into Oregon City at all, um, is pretty incredible. Um, I've taken my thorough road, road trips this summer and been on many downtowns, uh, with nothing. Um, and so something's working and, and I, I just, I hope that the property owners see that as much as we do. So thank you.
So I'm invested in downtown, this whole business. Yep.
Actually, uh, because it's germane to all the input I'm gathering, um, we keep talking about, well, uh, we're interested in seeing what the property owners say. What type of input do you expect? I mean, I can gather, truly, all I can do is gather input, I can only gather input from people who want to comment. More likely that's either the, uh, the people who are really, really pro for it or the people who are really, you know, against it, so. How should I, uh, get this commission when that's we talk about?
So your preferred alternative would be that you hold the informational meeting and then we turn to a public hearing here. Where it's our responsibility to collect objections.
That's what the state requires of this commission, if it's going to court this process.
I guess, I guess I was sort of hoping that, um. That we would know, that, that you would be able to assess whether that was really a good idea before you brought it forward from. I mean, it's, it's challenging, I mean, under, in these economic times, it's challenging for business owners to think of another assessment upon themselves and so I would. Take that for a little test of the water if, um, we're beginning to see really positive response, I mean, I think that's a, that's a positive response for. Our investment in Main Street and I think it's a positive, um, reaction by owners that seem to be, uh, you know. Appreciative of the direction in which this is going, so I guess, I think it'd be nice to have a small. Early feedback on whether we're heading into a black hole or.
September fourteenth would provide that, uh, if the commission is okay, comfortable moving for knowing there's public notices still to go on, city hearings to go on, ordinances. The September fourteenth meeting is a chance for all of us, so. You there at the meeting or you cross me through communications I can give you to say, oh, yeah, nobody likes it, we're, you know, the program's done. And, 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 and.
And I don't think we need to waste our time holding public hearing if we're getting negative feedback, really. Yeah, the other positive things we could be doing for the business.
September fourteenth would be the chance, uh, and we've invited property owners to show up and, and.
Sure.
Discuss, so that would be a chance to get some feel for it, is there? Sort of anecdotal. I mean, give you numbers of whom, how, who showed up and what people said, is there any other input you all would like?
I'd just like to get a head count from my fellow commissioners on, um, giving direction as to whether. You would want to draw from the, the, uh, the business owners downtown as well.
Actually, let's go through, uh, you're not on a regular year, so let's wait to finish that and then we'll see.
Um, I was, I'm not any expert on this, but isn't this process very similar to what you were setting up a national historic district? That you're only going to hear from people, it's, you know, ex, isn't it?
Probably closer to an LID.
To a.
LID. Local, local improvement district for public, I mean, the rules are different, but it's the same process.
Cause that has, um, allows for six, it requires sixty four percent, sixty six percent to oppose the LID. For the permission to reject the LID, so this is quite a difference in terms of the.
Personality.
Doug?
I mean, I think if, uh, if you had a business ownership agreement, it consists of the September fifteenth meeting. In terms of the, I don't think, I don't think it would be in property owners' best interest to take on. An, an additional tax if most of the health that their businesses were going to benefit from. The last thing you want to do is lose, and losing DCs and then go for a period of time and they got some dedicated land and they've got to find somebody else to put into it. So, um, I presume they've. At least those properties of which there have major changes and there were several of them, uh, that the property owners are aware that there's been a benefit to what's going on. In these last few, three years down there and, uh, they're not going to be, they don't want to put their. They don't want to put their clients in position that they're going to, uh, charge them out of the space and they have to lose in the process. But I think, I think fine, have the business owners come speak on the fifth reason as well.
Uh, well, one observation I have is that I'm just so proud of the work that Lloyd has done and. Also his board and others in the downtown that have led the community to win a number of these awards for its main street program. One of the things I'm concerned about is keeping that momentum and, and then as Commissioner Neely just mentioned, it's. It's sort of an investment in your own business, do you believe these special events are critical, particularly during a bridge closure? With huge traffic and energy and publicity, just the pressure releases a room that he sends out on a almost weekly basis, which I know you, you all read happily. The energy that's been created around that has really been a benefit to the downtown, but it has to be. I mean, I think the program started with seed money from the county, then subsidized by the city, at least throughout this, this fiscal year, then after that, the, the funding for it is. You know, very tenuous at best. And so, you know, you hate to say, you know, if you don't pay for this program, it's going to go away, but that's the. It, it's almost ironic that you folks are having this discussion right after we talked about the very. Disappointing topic for me as a new city manager in Oregon City, trying to find a way to fund these historic properties and sites and these heritage. Resources that you have, it almost makes me wish that when they flipped that coin at Ermitingher House, they had had a discussion about an EID. Or some, cause, cause on what we're doing here, you're talking about the sustainability of your downtown. The vitality, the thing that Rocky just mentioned about the up, down, up, down, to me, I see a breakover sort of point for it in city. I'm rooting for the home team to round that corner and be in the lead. I don't see how you get there without a vehicle like this in the downtown, so I'm, you know, I'm, uh, we don't know what the reaction is going to be, but whatever. And, and if any of you are getting feedback from whether they're business owners or property owners. In my view, it's almost irrelevant, it's not irrelevant to the statutory requirement, but it's irrelevant as far as the crescendo and the momentum. Because the business owners are, in some cases are the property owners and vice versa. What we really need to do is figure out what possible objections and concerns there are. I, I had one very conservative business owner say to me, you know, as long as I know. That the funds that are being generated, that we're going to be paying. Will not be gone, going to any other thing and they will definitely go into these downtown programs, I'm for it and I'm never for taxes. Is essentially the, the reaction, so if any of you, Jim or others have contacts from business or property owners or both. That have concerns about this, I would like to encourage you to reach out to them and Lloyd and let's get people together, even in smaller meetings in advance of that. See what concerns they have that we can work out in the process, because this is in everyone's interest, I think, if we can make it successful.
That, um. Just wanted, um, I think solidify X and testing, Doug, you said you're okay with, um, having business owners.
I think everybody nodded to the big one. Okay, Doug?
One, one, I think one major way that is different than in local improvement district, usually a local improvement district is focused on. Maybe one aspect of the structural development and once that's developed in the state for it, then the local improvement district is theirs. I'd like to try to have some mechanism where, I don't want to say four years or five years, we can actually look at it and see, is it doing the things you think it ought to do?
It has a five year max.
It does have a five.
Let me, uh, thank you for letting me hit a home run here, uh, maybe I can explain when I can get home. There is not a single EID that has been created in the state that has ever not renewed. I just talked to the downtown city manager in McMinnville, I said, give me your performance measures, he said, well, we don't keep performance measures. Well, I do, but, so there's the second question, I have performance measures we can gauge against, but his response was. It's changed our downtown, one, it's transformed our downtown, that was the paraphrase implied quote from him, it's, it's changed our downtown and two. Every three years we've renewed it. Now, the, one of these downtown districts that I've met with has said, Lloyd, if you can, if you can go to the five year program and do it. Uh, so anecdotally, we see that once, uh, Baker City, McMinnville, Corvallis, Artis. Property owners continue to fund it again and again, that's a success story for the concept. Two, we do track performance measures in my downtown, we track business starts, we track business departures, we track employment. We track, uh, public funding for projects. Private funding for building rehab, we track visitors at events, so we have, in fact, each of these program priorities, we have tracking measures, so we know. Are we having an impact? And then is it a positive impact or negative? So that's something I'd be very sure we would continue to do.
Okay, good discussion, um, go forth and, uh, to Ray.
Let me, let me one then sum up, uh, would your city staff need any direction between now and your next meeting in order to do the public noticing that? Needs to happen, or we wait until your next meeting to do that, it's a, it's a timeline that does matter.
Yeah, because you can talk to staff about, about those requirements. Okay. Okay. Now, let's take a short break, um, can you, is five minutes long enough? Okay. Director, please, you still have a long agenda for us? If there are, thank you, if there are no objections, um, we may have more people here for some agenda items further down than for the metro natural spaces found. Is there any objection to moving to the next LID at half course on Habitat? Do you have any reasons? I've seen that some of you are there for that and some of you are also here for everything else. So, um, let's take the task force on Habitat enhancing then first and who is? Oh, well then, let's do Ermitingher House. I see this guy is, um, here, so you would be willing to do the official report, but it's right on that. Thank you. Yeah, you have to do both.
So, um, commissioners, uh, this is a follow up on, uh, some, some discussions we've been having regarding the, the Ermitingher House. And, um, really the concern over its long term preservation, um. You may remember back, way back in the center of two thousand and nine, uh, at, at this, uh, commission chambers, we. The, the city in, I think he signed a letter, presented to Tracy Fortman, who is the superintendent of the Fort Vancouver National Stories Site. A letter that, uh, basically proposed that we, um. Inter进去some discussions and that the, the, I'll refer to them as, I'll say NPS, short for the National Park Service, so I don't have to keep saying those three long words. The, uh, that the NPS would consider, uh, the transfer of, of the Ermitingher House from the city to, to them. For the long term preservation of public use, it indicated that they were open to that discussion and, uh. It made sense to, to explore that avenue. Since that time, in, over the course of, of a number of months, we had, uh, several conversations, there was a lot of back and forth sometimes. Part of the reason why it's been this long to follow up is because frankly, um, getting a group of people together sometimes takes a, a while, so the, the few meetings that we had, they, they would bring people down from. Seattle and, and Vancouver and it just, it just took a while to get the few meetings together that we did have, so that's why there's a time, a timeframe here. The, the outcome of those meetings, uh, the, basically the response from the, the, the NPS is, is in my written report to you, but, uh. I'd like to go ahead and, and kind of summarize those to you as well, just for the, for the audience's information. And this again is the, this, this is the response from the NPS. An act of Congress would be required in order for the Ermitingher House to become part of the Fort Vancouver National Stories Site. Now, let me back up just a half step, I apologize, but, um, I think, uh, part of the context here is that what was being discussed is that. The Ermitingher House would become, um, a part of the national, of the Fort Vancouver site, much like the McLaughlin House is, and I know you're all very familiar with that. What was originally considered was, um, that it would be, be done as part of what the park service calls a minor boundary adjustment, which is. Something that doesn't require legislation. Initially, that's what their staff thought they might be able to do. And so they were, they were moving upon that premise. And as we moved forward through the discussions, what they discovered was that, in fact, would not be able to be worked out. So that, the, the outcome is that it would, would require legislation, which is, um. Currently not being entertained and that, to, to, to have that process happen, uh, can be a multi-year process, so. So the easy answer was that the, the, the short and the easy way to do this was through that boundary adjustment idea where they would essentially say. This sort of becomes an arm of the McLaughlin House, but, um, but again, that doesn't work. Uh, Superintendent Fortman, um, recognizes that the NPS and the city have a shared mission of preserving history. Um, and that our histories and the Hudson's Bay Company story are, are very much interconnected, so they've got the McLaughlin House and the Barkley House here. And they recognize the connection with Oregon City and so this, this, um, discussion about the Ermitingher House is, is very important to the, to the NPS. As a partner and a good neighbor, the NPS wants to be made very known. As a partner and a good neighbor, the NPS wants to be made very known and very clear that they are interested in being involved with and identifying ways to partner with Oregon City to assist in the preservation of the Ermitingher House. They, they feel this extremely important. They are willing to enter into an agreement with us to provide technical assistance and other programming support. And we discussed a number of things that this could mean. But, uh, in essence, they're, they're trying to offer assistance to us to, because of, again, of the interconnection. And frankly, um, they are good at doing historic preservation. And we've talked about our abilities and our shortcomings, um, to do that, and, um, you know, they would like to help us with that, as much as they are able to do so. Having, having this type of an agreement in place would help the city, frankly, because, you know, we don't have the resources on staff to do that. So that would be, that would be a great help. The bottom line is, of course, the big, the big question is the money. And, um, the, the NPS is at this time not able to provide us with any type of funding assistance. So, um, where this is left with our discussion with, with them is that, again, exploring, uh, this potential for legislation is certainly, it's open to discussion. There wasn't, you know, there wasn't a strong sentiment one way or another, it was sort of, you know, this is something that will take a while, and I think, you know, we'll probably need to just to continue to knock on that door and see if that, if that's a possibility. And I do think we need to explore this partnership, I think we need to look at this, um, agreement with them. We could very much use the technical assistance, they've already, just through this discussion these last several months, they've already provided us some technical assistance through, for example, when they were considering taking the house. I mean, they, they investigated this very thoroughly, to the point of doing a full, um, physical assessment of, of the house and, um, doing their own report on that and understanding what, what it is that, that the house would have, you know, would have needed in their opinion or estimation for preservation. So they, they've already done some of that work, we'll be able to, I think, capture some of that technical assistance that they, they've already, you know, they've already, uh, they've already done. So there are things like that, I think, that can be very helpful. So, it's not good news, um, but it's not horrible news either, it's sort of in between. Ideally, if, you know, I would love to have been reported back to you that they said yes, and it's a go, and by, you know, whatever time next year, we're going to be able to transfer the house, and that's just unfortunately not gonna happen. But I think we need to continue to pursue this partnership, this relationship that we already have, and they've offered to, again, to expand upon the relationship that we already have. So, um, that's the, the discussion with the partnership possibilities with the park service. Where that leaves us right now, and again, I wanna, I wanna emphasize, I think, even though that probably caused us to sort of wait on some things on the house for several months, I think it was important that we had that conversation. I mean, the word that they could say was no, and, um, we're still in the same situation we were in. We may have lost a little bit of time, but, um, you know, the, the positive outcomes, I think, we've gotten some, we've gotten some progress with them, and we still have this potential to explore. So, um, we needed to have that conversation, they, they opened that door to us to have that conversation, and we, we felt that we needed to completely kind of vet that out with them. Where this leaves us now is, um, is sort of needing to figure out where to go. We do have, uh, the, the Hardings are still under, um, an agreement with the city and, and are continuing to, uh, to kindly volunteer and dedicate themselves to the, to the facility. We have a, an understanding with them through the end of this calendar year. That's open to discussion at the end of the year, I, I don't know exactly where, where they're at, we'll have to, we'll have to explore that. But as far as the physical part of the house, the preservation, um, I think you understand well that we've got a lot of needs there. We have a, uh, a preservation assessment report that was done, I believe, two thousand and two. So it's a little outdated at this time, we may want to look back at that and, and take a look at updating that as well as combining that with some recent information that the park service, I think, can provide based on their assessment, which I think will be very valuable, and take a look at that. But at the time, um, that assessment told us that we needed to invest about seven hundred thousand dollars into the house. Now, over those several years, we've continued to make some minor investments, I wouldn't say major, but we've made some minor investments, and we've done some minimal upkeep on the house. We have a budget annually of three thousand dollars to operate that facility, which is really not, not much. And that, that goes to, you know, and, and again, it's not for the Hardings, because out of their own, um, I think dedication and kindness, they've, they've gone out on their own and bought supplies for the building and done things that frankly, I, you know, I wish they didn't feel that they had to do, but I think they're so dedicated that they do. But, um, any major issue that comes up, we've had to, you know, come back and talk about, you know, a little bit of use of contingency here and there. We've talked about the need to do some preservation, uh, kind of immediate needs up for, for the upcoming winter season, which is, we look out the window tonight, it looks like it might be coming a little bit earlier, but hopefully that's short-lived. But I think we've still got time. What, what the immediate needs that look like they need to be addressed are, um, we need to do some window repairs. We need to do some, um, paint stripping and painting of the house. And then, those, those are just some immediate basic things. And then we've got basically top to bottom structural issues that we have to address over the next seven years. And I, you know, I think we need to have that full conversation tonight, but I, I think, again, it's a good reminder. I know I've, I think I've told you a number of times these types of things, but, uh, we'll need to, we'll need to address how we go forth. As far as those immediate needs that we're looking at, the, uh, we have ten thousand dollars budgeted in urban renewal that we're prepared to extend. The windows, um, is based on a SHPO recommendation, some discussions that we've had with HRB and SHPO, we've kind of been in communication, but, um, we, we believe that we can do that for around ten thousand dollars. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that for sure, because we've, we've got some quotes that range, um, much higher than that, and depending on what we can do, we have to, we have to look at our, um, our historic review board on this process. So, um, at, at a minimum, I think we need to look at doing that before this winter season. And then, um, the, the painting project, probably next year, we can hold off on doing that, at least if we get the windows preserved. And we're looking at probably in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty thousand for the painting, which we don't have any money budgeted for at this point. So, what I'm, what I'm recommending we do is, is pursue the windows project, look at the, what, what the actual price is going to be, see how that works with the, the ten thousand dollars that we have budgeted with the urban renewal project. And then, if it looks like we need to spend more than that, um, I would have that conversation with, with, uh, Mr. Fraser and, and decide how to, how to go forward on that, if we needed to come back, for example, and ask for a contingency approval, or if we had that money within our budget that we could extend, so. With that, I guess I'll, I'll kind of stop there and let you mull that over, ask any questions, um, and, and basically, we're looking for some further direction.
Just a follow-up on the windows, so since the National Park, since NPS has invited us, says that it would help with technical support, have you talked to them about the windows?
Yeah, go ahead, please. I'm gonna let Denise try and answer that question.
Right.
Talked to them about several of the projects in there, and they have, um, advised us that before we do anything, if we'd like to continue to pursue, um, legislation to transfer the home over, that they would like to have a hand in all technical aspects as far as advice. Um, and that's prior to this conversation with Scott and initial agreement. The windows, they would like to take a look at our RFP, make sure that all of the details and specs are laid out according to what they would like to see in the house. So they have discussed that, um, in casual conversation with me when we toured the house, um, and then again, when we talked about things that we could immediately do. Uh, we did take the ARP provided down behind the house because of fire hazard. Clackmostami, or Clackmostcfd also gave kudos for taking that down, they had concerns, NPS had concerns about that, plus it was causing water retention against the house. So we are taking some of their advice currently, and some of the very minimal maintenance things that we're able to do.
Thank you for that, and that leaves me, we're actually farther ahead than we were before. We don't have any more money, but to be able to preserve the house in the way that makes it acceptable to National Park Service, should someday down the road, that door become more open to us. I, 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 I really applaud this partnership. Still seem that the city didn't let the house go earlier, but, um, that is water on the bridge. But to be able to, to bring the National Park Back Service, uh, into back to the house, I think, can only be a positive in the long run. We're gonna struggle with it till that happens, but thank you for that. Rocky?
I'm stalling a little bit. No, I'm ready, I just gotta make sure I, um, think through this before I say it. Okay, so not good news, not bad news really, um, but we've had this discussion before. To me, there was no doubt that this was gonna be a four-year process, and that's what the NPS. So I, I think that the fact that we stalled waiting for this, then that this was gonna happen soon was a mistake. But I'm glad it's in process, I think that we're doing some good work with that. But my main concern is we have allocated ten thousand dollars for the house that's been sitting there for over a year. Okay? I brought that up numerous times, um, we tried to go through the process without really, I, I pretty much wrote a window grant myself, that was then taken to the HRB, and that didn't go through, obviously, because of the fact that they, because it was a city project, and I understand all that. But we have known the problems with the windows for a long time. We have had the ten thousand dollars for quite some time. And here we are, winter's starting again, and we have done nothing. And there's no way, no matter how hard we try, that we're gonna get those windows done in time for winter. And I, it, why do we, why do we keep pushing this down? I, I think the state needs to step in, and I've been, you know, pretty adamant about this, I think we need to look at ourselves. Uh, we are, we are not following our own demolition by neglect ordinances for this city. And what was the answer? The answer from this commission was, oh, well, the National Park's gonna take it, so it's gonna be fine. And we sat another year, and it's embarrassing, and, and, and what are we gonna do? I don't wanna leave here tonight until I hear a plan from staff or somebody about what we are gonna do to solve this problem now, before winter starts. What are we gonna do to take the ten thousand dollars? What is your plan to get those windows done for winter starts? Are we gonna use the ten thousand dollars for a magic grant? Are you guys working on grants? What are you doing?
I, I think I just explained that we're going to move forward.
Before winter, are we gonna have windows fixed in that house, is my question.
We're gonna do the best we can, Commissioner. We acted on previous commission direction, which was to wait to spend any major investment in the house until we had concluded some of these conversations with the, uh, the park service. And, um, we've got that answer, and, and now we know what we need to do, so we're gonna move forward. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a promise that I don't know for sure that I can keep, but I'm gonna tell you that we are doing the best that we can. I also, I wanna reiterate, Ms. Kai is our Assistant Parks and Rec Director, she has a thousand duties. I'm your chief, I'm your chief park planner, um, code enforcement director, et cetera. What I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make, Commissioner, I don't mean respectfully, is we have got a thousand tasks on the plate. And, um, I think this is one of the issues that we have to address, is that, and it goes back to the discussion on, um, about the Carnegie, when the, the idea came up about how do we address all of our cultural and historical facilities? I think we need to figure that out, because frankly, your staff are at a point where we are having a very, very difficult time, and I can tell you, we're doing the best we can. I, I have as dedicated of a staff as you can have, and I assure you that we are doing the best that we can. But I can't do any better than our best, that's the best that I can do. So, I'm, I'm just, that's.
I understand that, I understand that, but we can do better. And we had ten thousand dollars sitting there for over a year. We had two, um, we had two estimates from between seven to fifteen thousand dollars for fixed windows, a year ago. Okay, so that's not the best that we can do. Now, as, as far as this commission's concerned, this commission needs to get off of, you know, its shoe and say, we are not gonna let this go any farther. I mean, Doug decided that ten thousand dollars, we almost lost it, because it's been, it's sat there for a year. So where are we gonna tell that to staff, that this is a priority and it needs to be fixed now? This has to happen this year. Okay, it has to happen this year.
Mayor, I think, I might, I just wanna make sure that, uh, those frustrations did, that, that discussion needs to happen with the commission, because if Scott was acting under council direction not to proceed with those expenditures until he heard back from NPS, I want, he can only do what he's directed to do, and I wasn't there for it, but I wanna make sure you guys.
And I want, I want the commission to know that, you know, when we had this discussion last time, you all knew that this wasn't gonna be a one-year process with National Park Service. So it's our fault, it's our fault. Okay, so when are we gonna take some ownership of it? Especially those of you who are running for reelection, this is your responsibility. We said, oh, we're gonna put you aside, because we don't have time right now. When are we gonna have time?
I think it's priorities as well, Dave.
The priority campaigning, let's fix the house.
Even though we were pursuing the NPS, we also put out an RFP for the windows. The RFP came in with three bids coming back, ranging from just under ten thousand dollars to just over twenty-nine thousand dollars. And that is based on the specs of SHPO and HRB. So, the ten thousand dollars for the windows, the base bid is just under ten thousand dollars. And that may not take everything into consideration once they get into the building. So the ten thousand dollars, we're ready to go with the bids we have, just going back to these, um, contractors and making sure that they have a timeline that they can proceed, once the bid has been selected. Again, the base bid is just under ten thousand dollars, based on the RFP that was set out. So we can move forward, and that has been done as we've gone through this process. So we have some things in play. The other thing that we have been doing, even though we've been on hold, is getting quotes and bids for processes to do the painting on the house. So we haven't actually been doing nothing, we actually have been working. It's just without the funding and the mechanisms in place and the commissions overall that I had not to proceed, we have been putting work aside on hold until that decision is made.
Okay, Beth?
Wasn't the plan, I was gonna go, I presume the Oregon City, uh, Oregon City, uh, sorry, there are more agency commissions that want to let the money swing through, so those can be put on the next agenda, I presume, if you've got to do it. My, my concern is what you've stated, that the National Park Service is willing to take a look at those expectations we have, whether that's to change them or not.
It may not change anything, SHPO put a hand in it, they just wanna make sure that whatever we do, they comply with what they.
I don't want to tire decisions specifically to do that, because they're, we don't, we have no obligation if they're on the table. We have no, we have no obligation to do that, it's just, um, I think the partnership thing, I want to support. Need it, I don't think we do.
I don't think we do, but at that amount, I think we can do it. Yeah, so we, there's, there's nothing in that regard that's to worry about.
In terms of the paintings, I don't want you to be gun shy. You've got two commissioners on this commission that have the budget here in city of bad time about funding a certain recreational activity every year out of the grant grants. This is a very good requirement. This is a specific, uh, specific thing that you're going to do, period. It's not a thing that's going to happen every year. So I don't want you to be gun shy about coming to the granting agencies for support for the painting projects.
I do want to say that Christina Robertson, Gregory Robertson, had also put in a grant application and it was also denied. So we had an applying for grant. Do you remember if it was SHPO that said? I think it was from SHPO.
Okay. I would like to make a request from staff because I, and I don't know if the Hardings are being kept up to date on, on the everyday happenings of the house, but I want to know. I, I mean, if you're doing anything, if there's a grant going through, if there's anything, I want to know about it. And I'm sure the Hardings want to know about it too. Um, the, when the hedge was removed, no one knew about it. Uh, so the rats' motivation wasn't there. I mean, I didn't know it. And now that I hear why it was done, I, I can accept it. But, but I, I want them, I want the Hardings to be kept in the loop on what's going on too with the house. Because part of our, our, I, I, you can, you know, look it off if you want, but, but here's the deal. I've been associated with the house far longer than you have, okay? Far longer. I know what has happened in the past with this house, okay? The best scenario for you to educate me on what you're doing with the house is to tell me. Because as far as I'm concerned, nothing's happening to the house because I'm not seeing anything. I'm not seeing things change. It's the same thing. So if you're doing things to the house to help it, you probably should communicate with us because we're not seeing it. And if we're not seeing it, it isn't happening. Okay? So here's the deal. We need to, as a commission, solve this as soon as possible. We need to get it, if it's on the agenda for urban renewal, that's fine, but we cannot let it go beyond, beyond this, this. The windows have to be fixed.
I think they said that was headed. I think they affirmed that several times, but it's moving.
Can I clarify, Commissioner Smith? It, are we being directed by the commission itself to make sure that we report directly to the commission every detail of the container?
I think that you should be, as staff, this is my point of view, whether the commission agrees with that, I don't know. But if we have an agreement with volunteer managers at the house, they should be a, a, aware of what's going on with the house.
And just to clarify, it did let them know that we were taking out the hedge prior to going out.
Did they? Did the city notify you?
As I'm, I talked to them in a meeting, I also called them again. So key contact required to removing it.
I think there's still a difference between maintenance on a facility and the operations of a, of a facility. I guess I would be comfortable with, um, you know, periodic, periodic reports, um, on, on what's happening with the facility. Because once we set the budget parameters and I think, and staff understands our direction, then I don't think we need to know every little detail of, of what, what staff does. We certainly want to direct, or make sure the direction is clear, which we want to do. So just any minor heads of thought.
Well, I don't feel differently, except for the one that concerns the range in bids and those that, um, we were very careful on the, on the need to get, uh, uh, a firm that was extremely qualified to do the kinds of work that they did on, on the block problem. I presume you've got a basis of reviewing capabilities. If, if you had doubts about it, then you need to go for some additional funding on the windows. I think you, you can prepare to do so.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. That's, um, that's why Denise made that, that point about the range is that, um, pending the, the review of those, of those bids, we may have a recommendation to go with a low bidder or we may not. So we wanted to make sure that you understood that there's a possibility that we need to have a discussion about, uh, some additional funds to get this done by this, by this season. Okay, and we're prepared to, through, through my boss, of course, I'll, I'll, uh, talk to him and, and, and we'll talk to you about if we need to talk about, you know.
They don't need to hear our noise, just directly out of the, I mean, I, maybe I threw out a news to look at.
I clearly understand that and we're not going to be shy about bringing that up.
I hate it.
So, just so I'm clear. Um, it sounds like our staff did communicate with the, the folks that are taking care of the house. Um, if there's additional communication or like a six month report on limit tag or something like that that we can do as a placeholder, that's good too. We can, we can do that. In the meantime, we're going to proceed as expeditiously as possible on the window contract with the lowest responsible bid. We have confidence in the product. Uh, and if it exceeds the budget that we have available, then we will come and report to you whatever adjustment we need from contingency.
And that means also that we should be pursuing painting as well, since we have another.
We don't have funding.
You don't have any funding, that's like a thirty total.
We have $10,000. Thirty from urban renewal.
We will, um, we'll be back to discuss the, the painting issue. What, what, the only reason I brought that up is that, um, that's something that we've identified that, that does need to be done, but the windows is the priority, are the priority. And, um, we'll be, we'll be back at some point, probably within this, this current budget year, to talk to you about how we might, um, work with either the commission or the urban renewal agency, whatever, whichever organization wants to direct us to do their project or explore the funding. So that, that was just a heads up. That was just a heads up. But that's coming on the heels of the windows.
Okay, thank you. Mark Harding, let's come forward.
Mark Harding, Oregon City. Um, we were notified that, uh, two shrubs were going to be kept down. Those two shrubs were the ones in the parking spot, uh, by the Ermitainer house. We were very surprised when we saw all of the shrubs had been taken down. Um, one of the things that I would like to comment on, um, not necessarily the shrubs, but even if the front windows could be taken care of by winter, those are the very, very serious ones. Um, water is literally running in the windows and on the walls. And it's, it's essential that at least those front windows are taken care of immediately, if not sooner. And yes, we are volunteers there, but we're in the house so much. We see what the, uh, important things are and we really feel that some of these things, um, need to be constantly brought up. Right now, unfortunately, the house is looking at demolition by, by neglect. That's still where it's going. Now, one of the things I want to mention, and I hope that this might be on a positive note. This has been brought up several times throughout the meeting tonight, and that is the Carnegie and the other facilities that, um, that the city has. Um, there are incredible number of citizens in this town that would like to be a part of the, the, uh, solution. And what we have asked these citizens to come together, they brainstorm. You have come up with several ideas for sitting here tonight. And if you would be willing to listen and even join in, um, the, um, community solutions. There's a lot of volunteers out there that are willing to put in the time, put in their own money and to produce things. One of the things that was mentioned tonight that I hope that you will look at is a nonprofit organization. I think personally, it would be wonderful if the Carnegie had a nonprofit, uh, or if it's an, if it's a Friends of Oregon City or something that the Ermitainer could be a part of also. One of our problems that we have faced over the years is that we cannot go after grants because it belongs to the city. And you need to have a nonprofit going after these grants. And there's a lot of possibilities. So there's, there's hope out there, so please, um, let's be part of the solution.
Thank you. Um, we don't normally take tests, you signed up, okay, William.
Excuse me, I don't know, this is the case, but an idea just occurred, well, this mentioned to me that, that, um, Home Depot frequently does community projects. And I didn't know if they'd been contacted because I've seen them do all sorts of things. They built playgrounds. They, they do that. I don't know if we have contacted any other corporations that would be willing to do some community project like that. It might be a way of getting some, getting some help in that regard, or maybe getting students to help aid it or something.
You're good until you went to the. Okay, thank you. So Sam, and where are you headed or you have other questions?
I'm right to our understanding and then, um, but I just, I guess just a final comment or kind of revisiting this again. I don't mean to be overly repetitive, but, um, we focused a lot of the discussion just on the windows. That's the iceberg for this house. And so we're going to do that. We've got, obviously, we've got our direction and our marketing orders tonight. Um, but I just didn't want to lose the rest of the conversation with the commission. I, I know that we're not going to solve this tonight, but it's just, just to leave with you that, that, again, with some of these other conversations about facility issues, it seems to be the, the year of the facility challenge here. Um, but, uh, we, we very much have some, some significant issues and I don't want to, I prefer a staff not to be in this position where I'm feeling, you know, the angst or whatever of, of either any of the individual or the entire commission. We need to understand how, how to proceed on this. And then I think that'll have to have, we'll have to have some further conversation about this.
Another unsolved issue.
See where this fits in with the rest of our, our priorities and issues as a city. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, let's move to the discussion on task force habitat enhancements. Something brought to the vision by Commissioner Nocita and Commissioners Neely, and we discussed that on our, um.
Year ago.
Yeah, golf session a year ago. Who is going to take the star in the end? Nancy Redd, Howard?
That's about to happen on the desk. Okay. Um, yes, about a year ago, actually, um, this shows how well our workloads really are. Certainly sympathize with Denise and Scott. Um, far a year ago, Commissioners Nocita and me, we brought, uh, a memo to the division regarding, um, establishing a task force of habitat enhancement. Primarily, um, the way, the way the memo read, which you have it in front of you, the goal is to enhance long-term habitat for native vertebrate and invertebrate species in the Cove and lower Clackamas River in the recurring areas. The task force will consider broad range of habitat enhancement opportunities. And then it goes on to talk about the marine control connectivity between the Cove and the two rivers. And then, um, also long-term recreational and commercial river traffic on the Malamet between the Columbia and Lamont Falls locks. That takes us quite a bit of place down. Um, but, but, but I think we, we've talked about this probably in several, just come up in several meetings. And then we actually had a work session where it was on the agenda and we didn't get too far with it. And I also attached the, uh, just a portion of the minutes from that, um, meeting for you to just be review, just review. And, um, what I think, what I would hope to get out of this work session tonight is, um, to discuss the, um, the overall purpose again of this task force. And what, to me, it would help to understand what do we see as, um, what, what is this, um, what do we see as this, what is the outcome of this, if the task force has been successful? That's kind of what I am trying to put my, um, passion towards there. And, um, there's also some technical issues like staffing, management, who's in charge of it? And, um, funding, schedule, um, duration. I mean, I see some, talk about long-term, um, solutions here, which it would be nice to understand what, what we're looking at in terms of this. This is just a temporary task force or is it a longstanding committee? And, um, then there's also the, um, expectations of, the two commissioners laid out a long list. I will say long because this would be a very large committee, um, of potential participants. And what, would these be volunteers or would they be doing this during work hours? Would their employers, um, support this? And, um, then we also have attached a list of questions that was submitted at one of the meetings. And I really think, um, it would be good to try to go through those. We may not have time tonight, but if we're trying to get some kind of closure to this, or at least move it along somewhat, I think these are questions that are good ones to, to make sure that, um, we have all the information available for the commissioners to decide where they want to go with it. So I think I'll probably pass it back to the mayor or, um, because there's quite a bit here to cover. Um, obviously, from a staff standpoint, the main concerns is the management, administration, funding, who's in charge? And what is, what's the first thing to do? You know, I mean, it's hard to create something when you have limited resources. Um, or would it even be a thought to talk to, say, the Clackamas River Watership Council about these issues? And maybe try to get representation on that, um, council? I know we have the Greater Oregon City Watership Council and I know who's your, you know, is active in that.
Not in our jurisdiction.
Okay, yeah, so that would be, but those are other thoughts, um, I would have. What, what other avenues have we, would be possible to address these concerns? And really, I think that's probably best now to just, um, leave it up to the commissioners that propose this and, um, and the mayor.
Okay, um, maybe a good place to start, Aral, with the questions, and we want to start, um, somewhere else, but, um, task force versus, versus advisory committee is number one on that. And the length and duration of the task, task force, actually, probably that's not more, that's not as fundamental as, um, number nine. What is the problem we're trying to solve and what does success look like? I think that was Nancy kind of reiterated, and I've been trying to, um, get it clear in my mind, so. You know, or Doug?
Did you repeat your last question?
It's number nine, uh, what is the problem we're trying to solve and what does success look like? It's number nine there. Um, that's when I've been kind of struggling with really what the outcome is, expected outcome. Everyone, you want to start?
I want to.
No, it doesn't matter, just go ahead.
Okay. First of all, one of the major issues is that really the, um, the goal habitat is, um, really far from what you see habitat in a while. First of all, I just, but, you know, the question is, uh, what can we do about it? And one of the things that triggered it was, uh, of the possibilities that, uh, perhaps enhancement can be done based on ledging activities that it could occur at the mouth of the Clackamas, which is something that the city, uh, has, uh, has a permit to do. And there's a question of jurisdictional, um, uh, jurisdictional aspects. Now, of course, the jurisdictional aspect is how that material is being used now, as required to be used. Whether there's a possibility of using that m- material for certain purposes in the Cove. I've heard various citizens make various, uh, suggestions on how that code can be enhanced. And really, and obviously, one of the functions of the task force is to look at various alternatives, uh, in terms of habitat enhancement. Um, uh, we were very fearful not to tire to the, to the dredging operation that was under the permit. under the permit. There was really a sense, however, that this was gonna happen in about a year's time. Uh, but if, if we're talking about something that is not going to be done for a couple of years, I think we ought to look at how that material might be used to enhance the code. There's new suggestions of, of creating an area there where shorebirds could actually have some habitat and adding grass, um, perhaps islands within the code in which perhaps you even have, uh, nesting, uh, indigenous turtles, like the western palm turtle, western paneed turtle, which is being reintroduced into certain waters and so forth. Very sensitive and forward by various citizens is how that code could be utilized. Um, and I, 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 I really recognize that this task force initially being as a basis for, uh, throwing out ideas for examination of what the possibilities are and, uh, the, you're right, it was a long list presented, but I think those were more from the standpoint of entities to be involved. It would not necessarily all be task force members. And, uh, I don't think the agencies would want to participate at that level. At one point, the agencies, of course, would be uninvolved in the process, obviously, finally. Um, I had personal problems and, but I did want to bring up in terms of identifying specific people to be on, on, on that task force. I do believe there are, um, groups of people that should have represented, representatives on that task force and that's what I would like to, to look at. But, uh, uh, in any case, uh, initially, you're not gonna get a well-defined set of objectives because I don't think we know what the initial possibilities are. And that is, I think, one of the first tasks that we, that we've come forward is to see what opportunities there are there and to select among those opportunities. Uh, personally, I, uh, I don't have a problem with how, how the task force is put together. I'm probably more concerned with what, what, what entities are represented on that particular task force. You, you've had, you have interested parties here that, uh, that have been involved in one degree or another in making testimony regarding the code and so forth, including the person I think that has helped us put, uh, forward, uh, set up the, uh, permit request for, for the dredging, I've heard. So, uh, we're gonna ask specific stakeholders that are, are strongly interested, including to whatever kinds of, uh, the, whatever kinds, um, whoever the development entities are that are going to be involved in, in some structural development around.
Okay, so if I were to put it in a very, what, a one-sentence, um, description, the expected outcome would be a more, uh, a, a code that is, uh, more habitat friendly? That's essentially?
Mostly.
Okay. Okay, that clarifies that one. Um, okay, so who do you believe would, um, staff it and is it a task force or an advisory committee? So what would be the relationship to the city, I think, is a, is a, another big question.
James.
It just comes to you, Jim.
Well, James is going to, um, create ignorance here. Um, I, I confess my ignorance as to, um, what the precise difference is in the task force and advisory committee.
Well, task force, I believe, usually is a committee that has a defined beginning and has a expected outcome and it's huge to short term. A, our advisory committees have defined membership and length of terms for the membership and go on until we resolve them or the need is no longer there.
Okay. Then the way I would envision it, um, would be that it would initially be a task force with the possibility of, of morphing into an advisory committee. And during the time of that initial task force, one of the things I could see happening, um, in, in the defined timeline of the task force is that short-term objectives might be identified and that, um, even the task force would come up with specific recommendations for those short-term objectives. But it also might identify, um, longer-term objectives and that, um, as part of that process, the task force, um, given the time and expertise that they will, they'll have, might start figuring out ways to institutionalize, um, either itself or some other collection of individuals as a more permanent advisory committee. To, um, kind of echo what Doug said, I, I think that, um, um, I, I think one of the rea, one of the, the things we discussed early on when we were thinking about that memo was the fact that we have an issue, we have a couple of, of, of really, I think, pressing problems in the code. Um, and what, two, two of the pressing problems I see that the task force, I think, might have to address, and Doug may have a different opinion on this, the, the issue of the stability of the peninsula, um, is a pressing problem. Um, I, you know, the way the heights, the hydrodynamics work down there, you can see, you can see it flaking away. Um, and if that gets breached and the, and the Clackamas River starts flooding into the code, um, annually during Springtown High Water events, I don't even think we know what the, what the hydrological and hydraulic, um, impacts of that will be and whether any development plans for the code in this standpoint. That's a really important problem. Another important problem is the fact that at the mouth of the code, anytime you dredge the mouth of the code and you want to make the, the code, um, useful for, uh, you know, watercraft and such and those, et cetera, you have the constant process of resedimentation and, you know, dredging, um, often. Um, you know, how do we, how do we address that issue as well? Um, as far as, um, so those are very pressing problems and maybe a longer-term, um, issue that I see for the code is whether is, whether or not we use dredge soils for them. Um, the creation of, um, some kind of habitat islands or habitat enhancement with, within the code, um, to provide additional habitat, both underwater and, um, you know, emerging from the water would help to build the, you know, ecological productivity and habitat benefits of the code. There's been a lot of debate about riparian shading, for example, and that's one of the way of, of adding to the riparian shading and, and maybe, you know, the habitat more friendly for fish species. So even those three, you know, narrowly defined, specific, specifically defined objectives, um, they're each really complicated issues and, 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 and complicated issues like that demand expertise, um, they, they demand, um, creating ideas and, and, you know, ways of coming up with solutions and testing them and, um, validating them or, you know, um, deciding that they're not feasible. And that's, that's why a task force like this is, you know, a mechanism to, to come up with those ideas and, um, peer you them. Um, I think it's a, is a really necessary process that we embark on.
Right.
Um, well, sometimes when you know so much about a problem, you can almost, uh, not see an obvious question that needs to be asked, since I know very little about this. I'm gonna take advantage of my, my ignorance because I wasn't here for the discussions that, that generated this, but as I thought about this, um, it occurred to me that, especially when Commissioner Neely brought the question of jurisdiction, that you're, you're on some sort of a watershed, uh, committee or council where there's a lack of jurisdiction on this side, is that correct?
The watershed councils are defined in what cases throughout the, in the Greater Oregon City Watership Council, but it's, it's not involved in the two rivers. It's involved in streams that flow directly into the land.
And I'm wondering if, if there is.
There is Clackamas River watershed council.
And, and I'm wondering whether it's Clackamas River or it's, uh, the Lamont. Uh, it's one of them that's involved because there's water from both of them in the, in that area, I'm pretty sure. And I, I guess part of me thinks, um, trying to assemble a, a multi-jurisdictional group of folks to sit down and understanding all the technical ramifications and the different, I kind of discovered this when we tried to respond to the High Rocks incident, how many different layers of federal and state agencies control these waterways and essentially we're looking at navigable water to the United States, which has a whole other commerce clause, a bunch of other case law there behind that, but Jim and I are more familiar with and we want to be just from remembering those lawful dates. So it occurred to me that if we could get, there might be another way of having one of our commissioners serve on, on, have a seat, uh, a voice at the table at one of these, uh, judicial boards or commissions that actually have the authority to regulate this waterway and do something. Because one of my concerns is even if we put together this, this great team of folks and we even get people from all the different jurisdictions, the people that they send might not be the decision maker. The decision maker might still be that board or commission or that governing body over that rock waterway and then you and all these other folks putting tireless hours of information and it is sort of gets lost in a bureaucratic, uh, decision that doesn't reflect what you, what you wanted to see happen. I'm just thinking about pounds per square inch of influence. And it occurred to me that maybe if we reached out and discovered who, who is the regulatory body and how could we, it's, it's in our city, so we have a compelling argument to make that we should have a voice at the table. And, uh, it's not a technical voice per se, it's, it's more of a, of community values voice. And then we could get that, that seat assigned and one of, a member of the commission could pick a member who has an interest or a particular knowledge about it. You could go to that committee assignment like all the others that you do and then report back to the commission what's happening and kind of keep me informed, if you would, uh, particularly as we prepare the budget going forward. That just seems like it might be a better mechanism than, than this individual task force. And I don't know if that's even been explored, but I would certainly be willing to, for us to look into that if you thought it would work better.
Well, I think it'd be good if I did explore it, the fact is that it's been explored because this hasn't advanced. Despite the things on our part, that it did and that it did advance. So, uh, let me just mention that watershed councils and waters.
I don't know who, who did, but there's someone.
I think we've got a list of the, to a length of it, of the agencies that we feel are involved. Uh, and there might be, there might be in the audience here somebody that can respond to that, it's one of the, some of these units. Um, but even if you have these agencies, uh, I mean, you have to have some of the, some of the stakeholders, that is, the people that own properties along the coast, the city and the urban renewal agency being the major one. Uh, probably the only one left may be Rachel, um, in a decent way that is. But, uh, but in some sense, that probably makes some of the, some of the, um, I mean, the basing of it a lot easier, in fact, the jurisdictions themselves are, in fact, the property owners, or I guess they almost, owns almost all of it. And therefore, I think you have the responsibility to have it.
And I think one of the major issues left unsolved, um, which leads me to kind of like to explore David's idea is, um, I mean, we, we haven't determined staff, we haven't determined funding to, to staff it or to do all of the public outreach hearings that might be likely for it. And then where does this fall, does he, his priority list before or after Ermitainer House? I mean, it really is a priority system. Now, I'm very clear about the, about the, I'm, I'm clear about the goals now, but I think the mechanism of how we put it together, um, perhaps having our own committee is more influential, but it, it likely would only make recommendations to other agencies who might have to do, do the work. So it's funny, an intriguing idea of, um, trying to put people on the, those, definitely I think you're up.
I just started on some of it, but, um, every time this issue comes up, I end up with more questions than I had the time before. So tonight, my questions start exactly with Commissioner Smith and the item proceeding in his, uh, this compo and preparations of no money, limited staff. City of thirty thousand with a staff of fifteen thousand. What, and they are frustrated.
I didn't know.
I mean, it's. Staff was at a city for fifteen thousand. Okay. I know. Don't even pray here. So, um, you know, so that's, that's the first question. How are you gonna pay for it? Uh, then currently, then the other question is, is how would we get agencies and people to get interested in doing a task that's so far down the road? So in other words, if the code doesn't get done for a year or two and so none of this , uh, work can be done till after the code is done, so I don't get, how many people would be motivated to participate on something that they'd have no, their work would have no effect on for, um, for a long time? And, uh, then the other one is we're already in a, we have a current EDA with the code developers, so wanting to talk about putting islands in, that it wasn't in their plan for, um, you know, a water marina. So how does that work? And, um, how do you, how do you define short-term objectives when you can't start on anything till after the code is done, the code project? So those are just a few off your top.
Okay. Um, yeah. Jim?
Well, I don't want to have this discussion descend into, um, 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 default lines of the code project. Um, but I, I will say that just as, um, I don't think, because the permit for the dredging project, we, we've delayed that project for various reasons, especially the, the lack of commitment of Clackamas County on their share of dredging, dredging the code project. I no longer think that this, um, habitat task force, um, has to, um, you know, take as much, um, of that dredging permit, um, as a limiting parameter anymore that I did last year. And I'll say that the same thing for, um, the code project. Um, you know, we have a, we have a, we have a DDA with the developers of the code. They're in default on it. It's a legal matter, so I don't think there really is a DDA, there's not a legally binding DDA with the code project right now. So I don't think that, um, as a matter of, of contractual obligations, that we have to wait for the code project to happen, um, to do these, um, improvements. Um, and, and, and as a matter of fact, there's some of the problems pressing, like, as I say, um, the, the stability and integrity of the peninsula, I think is, is such a pressing public safety and community welfare issue that I think it almost would be irresponsible to wait on addressing that matter for either a dredging permit or the code project. So, um, you know, um, maybe that's a function of this taking a year or two, you know, really get a good discussion going on, that I, I think the limitations that Doug and I talked about last year when we first sat down on this don't really apply anymore. Um, so then also to respond to David's comments, um, I, 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 I don't want to kick, um, this off into some other organization like the, the Basin Council or any other, um, regional body because our, ours, um, our leadership and our, our purpose would get diluted into the larger organization. Um, we, I mean, the Urban Renewal Agency has titled Kingsland Around the Cove and Including the Bottom of the Cove, if I'm correct. That is, that is, um, you know, um, land that is, um, owned by an Oregon city entity. So seeding, seeding our, um, you know, our ability to act on that project to, to something where we're one seat on a bigger board. If we're struggling with our priorities, um, you know, as a city, um, on this, then it's gonna be even more of a struggle if we try to get some broader agency with a lot of other boards. then it's going to be even more of a struggle if we try to get some broader agency with a lot of other board members on it from other cities or other agencies or whatever to make this a priority. I think that would not happen. You know, just as when we submitted a permit to the Army Corps for a dredging permit for the mouth of the cove, and they have to act on it by law. Similarly, if we decide that we want to do habitat islands in the cove on our property and we submit a permit for that to the Army Corps, they would have to act on that. And it's our property, we can decide what we want to do with it. And because it's our property, I think we are the lead agency in the community to decide what we are going to do on that store and all the other agencies that are relevant to that project respond to that lead. So I think it should remain an initiative of the city. The city should be the lead agency on the planet and the city should move forward. Now to the funding question, and I can't remember if we raised this in the memo or not. I'm not sure that aside from maintaining the committee, that we would look to the city itself for what would be done in the cove itself. There are, I mean, this to me would be, one of the things that I think so, of course, either task force is doing, would not only identify what should get done, but identifying how to finance it. And there are grant agencies out there, I think the Bonafide Color Foundation is much one of them, that something like this will be, I mean, spread within what they would fund. So we could, as a matter, if it's the economy never comes out of this slump, you know, we become more like what the panels in the nineties and we have a, a ten-year recession rather than, you know, a two-year recession. And luxury condos never get built on those lovely building pads we're going to be preparing. We should still consider that the peninsula is failing and we need to address that problem. We should still, you know, create habitat islands in the cove for, for, for the inherent benefit that they would provide to habitat new economy. So I hope that helps answer some of that question.
Okay, I, I, that, that helps slightly. I mean, I'm, I'm well helped by improving the cove habitat, if that, if that's the outcome that, that's desired. I'm, I'm not clear though on, on who, who, who is assigned to do it because some of the cost of it isn't. I, I see actually that the implementation is probably very easier than putting together the, the work to get the community together. I mean, the community has to be appointed, communicated with, information has to be done back and forth. And perhaps professionals have to be listed to come, experts to come to meetings to talk about certain specific technical things. So that to me is where I think we've, we've not identified in budgeting money for this, for the, for this task force. So to me, I'm not quite there with how we put it together. It's, you know, it's a new program essentially, and that sort of violates our fire legislation. Project, I'm, you know, what, what? Just who, where, why, how, and how you meet and the public process that might be required. We just have to have a plan for that before we put it together. Nancy.
Um, well, from us, just from the public works perspective, I do hear, there's almost like there's two distinct projects that are specifically interested, is therefore, one would be the peninsula stability. And then the other is long-term dredging. And we, yes, you don't know what, how long it's going to last, what's going to happen next. And that would be very difficult to define, you know, and we've talked about that. No matter how much modeling we do, and we never know exactly what flood we're going to get and what sediments are going to really be tumbling down that riverbed. So then there's also use of the dredging spoils. That would essentially require that we open up our permit and reapply for a permit, and that can be done. And if, if volunteers are doing this, that sounds, you know, a good thing, you know, couldn't get grants. They're usually local matching and I guess my biggest concern is the funding. And, because one of these or both of these becomes a project. I mean, something you have to hire a contractor to do likely, I think. And it also requires, from what, because we are a public agency here. We think, I think we have to do bid documents and, and I think we have to hire people to put those together. And I know there are experts out there that may volunteer their help, but I think a lot of consultants aren't really working a lot for free to put together a whole package. And maybe we can get a lot of help in creating something, which would be very, a good thing. So those are just, you know, I just am concerned about delivering on this, to be really honest with you, unless there's funding for it. And if these are actually two distinct projects, where do they lie? Because then I'm concerned about the cove with anyone else. We did the Clackamas River Bank Stabilization Project and that was very successful, but it was quite a bit of effort, quite a bit of permitting and quite a bit of money. So.
How much was it? Do you remember?
Sorry, the project was about six hundred thousand dollars. So, so I just, since we couldn't get the dredging done this year because we didn't have enough money, I don't see a funding source for too much more of this. We used urban renewal money to do the Clackamas River Bank Stabilization Project. And so the swamp water fund doesn't have money to fund this kind of thing. The general fund I don't know about, but I just, I don't want to end up not being able to deliver. And yet I think it's a good idea. So that's lovely, just from our staff perspective, it's some concerns we have. Doug?
First of all, if I open the run, that is, the aspect of, of preserving the peninsula is probably similar to speaking of the aspect of the environment, the environmental stabilization of the cove itself. We lose the peninsula and the other becomes removed. My recollection is when we had discussions about the bank stabilization, one of the, there were various scenarios before about what happens if it fails. The major one seemed to be that the cove would become a mudfla. Now this. Yes, that was a discussion. Anyway, the point is that you've got a developer that wants to come in, maybe this one won't, but somebody else will. But if that back then was prepared, there's nothing to have left. But I mean, the point, the point is, that's, that's.
I just think you have to identify resources.
If we're getting a hiatus from the development there on the cove, that may be a death. But the point is, I don't think that we've ever had a public discussion about the public use of the cove. That's all come from the development community. It has not come from any discretionary assistance. Before this development went forward, at the very beginning of the process, I was no longer in the committee. I made a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which is, which I was on. Because the plans at that time had fields and so forth, they hadn't declared as a city park. That was squashed by, by members of the commission because this development process was going on. And when I came back in the commission, that process was going on, and that was what the future was. I don't know if, if the city probably is going to come back for some more discussions with us or if, if they are, when they're going to come back. But the point is, I think this is some opportunity to have public input in terms of what they want the cove to look like, without investing any money until we find out what it is we want to have. So at each time, I understand that, but it, I mean, we need millions of dollars of investment to purchase that land on the cove in the first place. And the city, then we don't have any plan in terms of how it's going to function and so forth. I, I, I've got a problem with it. The issue, the issue that Jim has brought up, the preservation of the peninsula is an extremely important one to any kind of development that occurs in that area. I'm surprised that Commissioner West suggested that we shouldn't engage in long-term vision. That's exactly what we should be doing at the cove. And, and we should take a look at that from the perspective of what various cycles have that like to see that co-function. I mean, we, we had input from the warm water fishery people, like we catch all those invasive species that we introduce in the land of river. And, he's not, anyway. But the point is, it's a, it's a good environment for this, so that's what we can test. I mean, there, there are interests that are there. And I, I think, I think, I think, I think, I probably think that it is a good idea to separate the issue of preservation of the peninsula itself and what we require to do that from perhaps the longer-term goals of how, how, what the cove is going to be like. And so I think we could create those as separate aspects. So I think much of what we had in here deals with the latter, how the cove is going to look like. But we've got to guarantee there's a cove there, in order to ensure that we have something to envision.
It, it still is a project though, I see it as a project. I really do.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and that costs money.
I know it costs money.
And yet we can get, if we could get the grant out of the fad, but there's still a lot of. So you just have to, you, you're.
For, for that, deeper piece, I'm asking you to write this. Would we need a task force to really come up with how to do that? Or is that really a technical team? It seems to me that would be, it would be the great recommendations to, you know, citizens. But, because that, that sounds different to me. Jim?
And let me see if I can kind of narrow this down to something really, something we can get our hands on. Back in the previous life, before I moved to Oregon, I was a planner in Ann Arbor, above their agencies, including the Great Lakes Commission. My job was to manage an advisory committee on adverse factors and impacts on the Great Lakes ecosystem. You know, throughout the whole Great Lakes State from the US and Canada. I think.
You have a volunteer job?
No. But you're, you're freezing where I'm going with this. It's, the, it takes, you know, X amount of FTEs to run a committee. And I have some recollection that one of the things we were asking staff to do for this workshop was to analyze the FTEs it would take to run the committee. That's a really, really, really narrow question. Where, some of the questions in this, questions related to the task force are frankly questions I think the task force itself should answer. I think what we're trying to do now is just explore if we, as a city, have, you know, sufficient staff and resources to simply gather a task force to meet on a monthly or quarterly basis to start talking about this stuff. On the committee I work, I organized, all the agencies like NRCS or state governments or, you know, Ontario, they have representatives, but it was those agencies that paid the folks to come to the meetings that I organized. All I did was, you know, send out the agenda, I typed up minutes. You know, we had, you know, a process where everybody took a piece of data to analyze and put together this sick report and minor it kind of big comments. I don't think it's going to break Oregon City's budget to be able to have someone devoted to writing a bunch of letters to agencies. It, it might be a self-selected process. If we were to send out a letter to, you know, the agency that Doug and I identified, we want to, you know, organize a task force to examine these issues. Please participate with, on this. I think, you know, the concern about it being a very broad or overbroad committee might be, you know, solved by a process of self-selection. Some people won't be chose, won't choose to participate. But I think many, many of the folks that we've identified will participate. Some of them are in the room right now, very interested and wondering why the hell we're not getting going on this, you know? So I, I think, I think what we need to do is just to identify what it takes for city staff to, you know, to organize monthly or quarterly meetings to get these conversations going, at least in the beginning. And maybe as part of that meeting process, the group will start identifying more. So to be concerned about this project, about this task force, because yes, whatever project we're going to focus on is going to have a multimillion dollar cost one or five years down the road. It's not a reason to throw up our hands and say, we can't do this because your senior house is a bigger priority. All we're doing is trying to figure out if we can finance monthly or quarterly meetings. And I don't think that's going to break even our, you know, tight bug with the Oregon city. I think that's something we have the resources to do, is to identify how much work that's going to take to organize, you know, these meetings, you know, and who can, who can take, you know, who can be assigned two or ten, you know, or twenty hours a month of their time with increased, uh, city staff to play the role that I, you know, played as a planner. You know, this wasn't my only project, so I wasn't doing it full-time. It did have a cost, but, you know, the agency had a budget. And similarly, we have, we're, we're a city administration that has a budget. And contingency in that budget, and I think we can find the dollars to find one person even to organize that committee, communicate with it, organize its meetings, type its needed minutes, report to the commission and, and, and manage the task force. Because all I think the task force is right now in this initial stage is managing meetings.
So if we hired one FTE, and it could be that this is a point two-five or a point five FTE, although it's kind of hard to, and that's difficult to get a point two-five FTE. But so one FTE, say it's sort of a planner level, it probably costs the city about a hundred thousand dollars a year, David? Is that about right? And so if it's more than one year, I'm sure we can find other things for that person to do, by the way. Or if it be an engineer or whoever it might be, there's plenty of work to do, but you are looking at. And that, then you have to, I mean, if it's general fund, it's general fund. But I know that there's a lot of other competition for the general fund dollars as well, as we talked about during budget time. But in public works, it doesn't really relate to utilities, so it'd be difficult, I think, to take it out of public works. And we, you know, we're happy to have someone work on it, but if we took someone who we have already, they don't have the hours to do it, we have to take some, some things off their plate. So that kind of gives you parameters for what you're talking about.
And when Nancy said a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about a lower level planner. You also got to remember, we've got the overhead that goes along with that, so that'd be your total budget impact, not their salary. You know, you're, you're tagging on fifty-five to sixty percent over their salary for, for benefits.
Well.
You know, then they also need the advantage, those kinds of things. But I'm, I'm saying that I think you could figure about a hundred thousand dollars a year for staffing.
So I think what we need to do, because we're spending a lot of time, is here, where to go next with this?
Yeah, I do have that.
It's, it's, yeah. Were you going next to something?
Well, I asked you to tell us what.
Oh, yes, yes, I think we need to identify where we want to go with this. Really, I mean, one of the options that the outside would be to hold, hold it over into next budgeting session.
A hundred thousand dollars is really a big.
I think you agree that it's going to take a hundred thousand dollars.
We'll have to hire somebody.
I don't think we have to hire somebody. In fact, I recall, I recall from, from our budget process this year that we were going to hand, hire someone who was in planning anyway.
Entry level AA person? An administrative assistant?
I don't think this, something like this takes much more than that.
I think you might be surprised, James, that our commissioner, Nacita, that there is quite, there will, you know, you really, you do need to have some experience and some knowledge to successfully manage this kind of endeavor. I think, yes.
Especially with, with state level and regional level.
Experience, environmental knowledge. And then also those skills to put together a committee that can make progress. I mean, those are not, those are learned skills, in my opinion.
So what do you think, you want to go with this, Stephanie?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Nacita, for clarifying that there's two different tasks here. Because part of my struggle with all this is I didn't even. Well, um, thank you, Commissioner Nacita, for clarifying that there's two different tasks here, because part of my struggle with all this is I didn't even get what you wanted to do. So now you've broken it up into two things, that helps a little bit. And, um, this is the first evening, um, Commissioner Neely, that I've ever heard the word visioning. Along with this process. I thought task force meant, we have task forces, they have a definite beginning and a finite ending. And it's usually short-term and it's project-related. So now we've gone from a project to, you know, a result focus, which I was essentially trying to figure out. What was the result when we can't even, well, thank you for that. The other, the other, just another scenario would be hiring a consultant to manage this task force. You'd still have to have a project manager with the city to do that. And, um, so that would mean adding a smaller amount of work to one of our existing staffs. And probably, probably taking something off their plate then as well.
Richard, have your race gone down after you retired?
So, uh, bye. We've been talking a lot of, well, you know, we, we do, and I hate to, this, um, so please come forward. Yeah, let's start it off with some by nine, because we have.
Welcome, Richard. Uh, thank you. For the record, I'm Richard Craven, and, um, an environmental consultant, about forty years' worth. Mostly retired, still working on a project from time to time. As some of you know, I was, I did the original permitting for the, the, um. Bike restoration project, and also the original dredging permit. And then about three or four years, that was about nineteen ninety, ninety-two, I can't remember, Nancy, exactly. And, um, then about five years later, I was under contract with the county to reevaluate dredging and so forth. And I came up with recommendations. One of course was to hire a engineer to, um, do some engineering work. And, um, the city and county, actually, was that county money or city?
We split.
Okay. And, um, the county did, well, they, the, actually, the county, I guess, hired the engineer, actually. And, um, I came in as a subcontractor for the permitting part of it. And I did the permitting for this most recent, uh, dredging operation. And so I've got a long history, uh, with the cove, and I live in Oregon City also, by the way. And, um, I wrote down a bunch of comments here, and they're in kind of a stream of consciences, consciences, I guess you could say. And I'll start with the last comment I wrote, and it has to do with the planner. I don't think you need a planner per se. You need a technical person that's familiar with environmental issues. That knows how to get the project through the agencies. And, but before you get to that point, you do need to do the bidding. What do you want to see out there in fifty years, a hundred years? Um, and to do that takes, takes a bit of time. Um, also, it's really, you're really limited in what you can actually do in the cove in terms of habitat restoration. We've gone through this process on the original permitting and also on this last permitting. And on the last permitting, as you recall, the dredge spoils were to be placed along the Willamette River. There was a reason for that, because our original, um, discussions with all the agencies, the National Fish and Service, the National Fish and Wildlife Service, et cetera. Were to put the dredge spoils in the cove, and we actually had a generic plan to form islands and, you know, shallow water areas, wetlands, et cetera. However, painful little problem in trying to do that, it was really expensive. Because the dredge that would come into the cove would have to dredge all the way basically from the river. Up to the cove and into the cove, because you had to somehow get the dredge barge into the cove to dump the dredge spoils. Okay? So there's a technical issue there that would need to be dealt with. It's very expensive to get dredge materials into the cove. Um, so, but there's limited things you can really do in there, you know, uh, in terms of actually improving habitat. And before you improve habitat, you obviously want to know what type of habitat are you improving and for what species? What are the target species out there? And you can only do that by having a technical person, discuss, come up with a, the possible, uh. Options, alternatives, or improvements out there, running those by the agencies. And then eventually getting it down to something that's acceptable and permissible. And the bottom line is, you gotta get it permanent. And so, um, you know, uh, you, you need a technical person to do that basically. Um. Oh, on, on the, on the idea of the task force, um, you know, you really got a, I was on the natural resource committee here for five years from the start. And the first thing we did was to look at the comp plan, right Doug?
So what?
The comprehensive plan.
You get the comp plan.
And, um, I, I tell you, you know, and I understand the natural resource committee is no longer functioning. But you've got a possibility right there, you know, of a committee. If you wanted to reform that and come up with, uh, maybe a strategy for dealing with it. Um, and I guess I mentioned the alternative analysis, I had it on both sides here. Uh, you know, you come up with some plans, alternatives, and run them by the agencies and try to figure out what's going to be acceptable. And then start your formal discussions with the agencies after you've come up with your preliminary options on this. Um, the, uh, possibility of. Peninsula integrity was mentioned earlier, and that is a problem. And my original, well, the report I did five years ago, um, under contract with the county. Um, you know, my, I think one of my recommendations was that you need to look at that lower half mile of the, of the river. Because basically, you've got a, what's called a backwater impact from the Willamette River upstream for a ways. And what that means is the water's rushing down the Flackness, and all of a sudden it's getting flatter. And the backwater from the Willamette is literally slowing down the, um, the current. And the bed load, the rocks are dropping to the bottom. So you're always going to have a deposition there. And I believe Jerry Herman has some old, uh, quad maps, maybe eighteen ninety-eight or so, that shows the island out there. So that island has always been there, it'll always be there. So you may be in some kind of a long-term dredging operation, which you shouldn't worry about that too much. Now, in terms of the integrity of the island, the hydraulic study would need to identify how you can control that. How you can somehow prevent that island from washing away, unless you, or peninsula from washing away. Unless you don't want the peninsula to wash, or unless you want it to wash away. Um. As far as dollars, you know, you're talking, um. To come up with the alternative analysis and hydraulics and stabilization possibilities, you're talking probably up to two-hundred fifty thousand problems to get that done. And that's just off the top of my head, um, just thinking about it for a few minutes. But, um, and I don't know where you, you know, you find that kind of money to do that, but, um.
Nancy's budget.
Yeah, Nancy's budget, sure. But anyway, um, those are my comments. I probably have more, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to.
That's a good help.
I thought it would be a hundred and twenty, so I think we've got a fifty-year vision.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I, I think we need to have further discussion on this, if, if this is the way that the commission wants, wants to go. Because we, we have multiple options. Um, we have the options of, um, have been, all the things have been proposed. Um, as Richard said, to, um, restart the natural resources committee. To, uh, deal with the two issues separately, the stability of the peninsula versus the habitat improvements. Um, what, you know, what, what kind of pay you need, want, need, who is the staff, where do we identify the source of that? So, um, I guess what I need to ask is that how many commissioners are interested in moving forward with an additional, um, discussion on, on what to, what to do with this? It, it, as, as we go along, the, the project sounds bigger and bigger to me to do it right.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm really concerned that the, um, that it needs to be appropriately budgeted. Um, and a little more discussion probably with a technical group of, of, of how to do that. I mean, um, it, it's, it's, it's just not that it's a huge project. Would it be beneficial? Yes, I love to think big and, uh, but there are so many factors to be weighed. So I'm not sure where, where to go with it. Uh, Doug?
Well, first of all, I think, I think we are talking about long-term vision in terms of the cove itself. I do think, uh, I do think, uh, that, uh. Uh, that, uh, Jim is, is correct, and that one of the major concerns ought to be the stability of the peninsula. And in some ways, having a development there was perhaps putting the cart before the horse. Other than if you had a development there, simply to save the, of, 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 so. Well, I, I don't know. I mean, we, that's never been a requirement on developer, to stabilize the peninsula. So I don't think that's the case. I was never, that's, that's not, that's not in any of the phases that we have. So no, the answer is no. Uh, I might be true of future developer, but it's certainly not, uh, true of the, uh, of the, the contract that has already expired in terms of its extension. But in any case, uh, uh. I mean, I, I don't know how these commissions are going to move, but I, I don't think this is going to make too much difference what the composition of the next commission is going to be. I think in the goal setting, uh, effort, they're going to, they're going to actually focus on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's, to me, that's, that's the appropriate place to really dig down on it, because it's going to require this to be a priority of, of, of one of our.
Fairness, fairness to say, is just part of our commission goals for this year.
Uh, David?
You know, Mayor, the, uh, commissioners, the, you, you have this, uh, in your goals, you, you had a budget that was. In theory designed to achieve those goals. This, this goal is much more clear in my mind, at least now, after you've had this discussion tonight. That we've got initial stability, habitat preservation, and enhancement, dredging spoils, how do we use them, and what, for what purpose? Long-term care, stabilization, and management, yeah, actually of the cove resource. Um, we, as staff, are working on this cove development with the, the partners there still. Preparing, uh, in October to bring forward, back to the URC, um, more discussion about a six-point-five million dollar expenditure of public money. For an esplanade and all the other infrastructure in phase one and two. Um, that being said, with phase one and two, if you're, if you're really going to commit those kind of public resources, as I've already been committed. You can't afford to build those things and have a mud flat, uh, show up in a, in a, after a particular flood event or a particularly dry summer or something like that. So I think this is an absolutely essential thing that you've got to take up at some point and budget it. Probably at least in this two-fifty range, to make sure that we have all the resources we need and the expertise we need. I think you're going to need a, an environmental consultant, a firm probably is experienced in this. And I think that, um, what Mr. Craven said mirrors, uh, the experiences that I've had in Lake Superior and other places I've worked where there've been freshwater bodies like this. I think that that's what it's going to take to do it the right way. And, and, uh, so we, staff, unless you tell us we can't do this. We'll be bringing this back to you during the retreat and saying, you know, we've got this public resource commitment of this park facility. We don't want to build a park on a mud flat. So we've got to think in advance how to preserve that resource. And I didn't realize that that was kind of the focus of.
It wasn't at the time.
Yeah. So this is common sense at this point. I mean, it, it, and you get common sense on your side by fleshing out this argument, to me, it's very powerful. And, um, so, uh, once those parameters are set in place, um, the budget that I would be proposing to follow your goal setting. Will have a list of priorities that you can, can afford. You'll have to make decisions about those. Um, that may have been what happened in this case, or it may have been just that it wasn't fleshed out clear enough. It was people that were working on the budget, maybe. I don't, I don't know what the reason was, but if you set a priority, I'm going to budget for it. Bring back a document that says this is what we can do and what we can't do. And then you, you may have a hard choice to make between this priority and four or five others. But, um, I don't see anywhere, anywhere you can't do it, when you've got this kind of, uh, impending expenses. On the, on the outside though, assuming, um, investments continue to be made on these projects, and there's eventually increment. Uh, you might even have some money there to maintain the habitat and enhance it long-term. Which, which would be a great thing to do for the community. So, you know, this might turn out to be a good thing.
Just to, look, just a very short comment on David's comments is that, um, two things. One is for that cove to become a mud flat, it would take quite a long time. I mean, I can give you examples of areas that, like Jackson Bottoms, places that are large wetlands. Now, this is not, I'm not saying that's what you want it to be. I'm not visiting for you. But there are examples of large wetlands, and they take forever and they serve a great purpose. And so there are a lot of things to consider in that vision. But the other thing I, I would recommend is that you perhaps consider to continue to pursue funding for this dredging permit we have. We, we're talking to the county, seeing what we can do with them. And, um, so that would be like, we have the short-term thing that is. We budgeted half the money for, and then there's revisioning and all the follow-up, um, work. So I'm not, I'm just recommending that you consider that kind of a step approach to that process. Doug?
Well, first of all, I'm still interested in pursuing the, uh, the, the, the budget. And, and from what Richard Craven said, uh, the, the fact of the matter is that. At this time, planning alternative uses for the dredging, uh, would be relatively expensive. But I think our original discussion is we weren't, we weren't going to real, really deal with this particular dredging permit that this would go forward. This was intended, actually, this was intended to be a longer-term vision. We weren't talking about the current dredging being even an issue here or, or anything else. Uh, uh, you make the, you make the point. I was going to say that even, even if the peninsula did disappear. All the, all the condominiums are probably, uh, would be purchased by bird watchers.
Okay. Well, I think this has been a good discussion, because it helped me to understand what, where you were going. And I think you've narrowed the focus a little bit, but increased the vision, which, um, I, I think is good. So it's not the end of the discussion. I appreciate you guys, um, hanging with us as we have, we all.
Try to read, read your minds.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Reminds you all.
Yes, exactly.
It's a little deep, though.
It's, we can have a brief five-minute break and then come back to the last item. Okay, I'd love to, uh.
I'm sure I will. I bet we will, we'll be those guys.
Let's get back into our meeting. We have two more, uh, discussion times. The first one is to consider the use of the Metro Natural Areas. Bond and your local legacy share allocation, which is the money that you use to purchase a property by the high school. And we're determining what to do next. And so Scott, do you want to lead us off?
Thank you, Mayor Rose. Commissioners, just as a quick background, um, because I think, uh, a couple of you were not on the commission at the time that we, uh, when the bond was passed. And just, again, just for a little bit of background information, so the Metro Nat, Metro Natural Areas Bond was passed in two thousand and six. Um, that, that is, uh, a bond measure that's generated two-hundred-and-twenty-seven point four million dollars region-wide. And it focuses on regional and local government acquisitions and projects designed to preserve and protect natural areas and benefit clean water. As part of this bond measure, there was a, uh, a program that was created called the, um, the Local Legacy Share Allocation. Um, this was created to direct forty-four million dollars of the, of the total bond package to, um, to local park providers. To use as they see fit in their communities to meet the, meet the, uh, requirements of the program. Uh, Oregon City's share of that was, uh, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Nine-eighty-eight, seven-twenty-eight, so just roughly less than a million dollars. Um, we entered into an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with Metro, so that we can spend these funds. Um, that, that agreement's been in place for a couple of years. Um, as part of that IGA, uh, we were required, the city was required to develop a list of, of projects. With, um, the approximate amount of funding attached to each project or project area. Um, and, uh, that was done via resolution. I've attached that to your commission report tonight. Um, and it was approved by the commission and is included as part of our IGA with Metro. So the, and, and again, this is, and it was, it was developed in priority order. And in order, those projects were the, the high school area, um, which was, we had identified five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, which, as you noted, Mayor Norris. We've already expended that. We expended the full five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Uh, that was our number one priority, and we were, uh, successful in that acquisition on the Quinell Grove. Uh, that was our number one priority and we were, uh, successful in that acquisition on the Quinell Road. In, actually in 2008. Um, the three remaining projects of which we've not spent, uh, any of the funds for at this point are, um, again, in priority order. The second one was the Canema area acquisition. Third was the Myers Road, Topfield Creek watershed area acquisition. And the fourth was Holcomb Creek watershed acquisition. The dollar amounts for each of those is attached or, or is, is beside those. But basically we have for all three of those projects, there's a balance of the original money, we've got a balance of $463,728. We are, as a part of this I G A, required to send these funds by March 30th, 2012. We've got roughly a year and a half left to identify what we want to do with this and, and to expend those. Otherwise, basically it, I guess, doesn't come our way. So, the, uh, the I G A with Metro does allow for, um, renegotiation of priorities or dollar amounts for the priorities or for completely different projects, so long as they fit the criteria of the program. Um, those are subject to approval by, by Metro, but there is the ability to renegotiate that. So, that's, that's where we're at. Um, that's basically just kind of an update, yes.
Well, um, in my, I need to have confirmation of that because in my reading of the, of the I G A here, I don't know what page it's on, but it's the projects not on the local share project list that we may substitute if or adding the project only if the following conditions are met. And one is, uh, that the partners find that one or more of the projects have become degraded or cost prohibitive or otherwise unfeasible. Our project cannot be accomplished unless the funds are estimated.
So I, I think.
So do we have to prove? We, we would have to actually go through the process to prove one of them?
Not that, it's not that complex. That, that language is probably more, um, complex than it is. In, in, in reality, the, the parks director for Metro, um, approves the request. And I've had stat, staff conversations and there have been, um, a number of agencies that they've, they've sent, they've sent me some of the, some of the examples of project substitutions and how, basically it's, the commission needs to do some formal action. We send a letter saying, please approve this request. And they, for the most part, it's, it's a pretty simplistic process. So.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anyway, just, just so you know, understand that the flexibility is there if you, if you showed, showed refuse to pursue that. So really the, I think the purpose of this report tonight was just an update on the progress. We've, we've spent a little over 50% of the fund, obviously, and we've, uh, accomplished our number one priority on the list, which was, which was a huge accomplishment. And, um, I think at this point, what we're looking for, or what I'm looking for is, um, some direction from the commission as to how you'd like to proceed with the remaining funds that we have available and what your sense of the priorities are and, and how you want to, how you want to go forward from that.
Okay. Doug, you want to start?
Yeah, I will. Um, to the degree, I mean, from my standpoint, we, we were given a fair amount of discretion in terms of how to use the funds on it. And the, in the purchase that we made, uh, very little of that land is likely to be used for, 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 for open space or, or habitat or anything of that nature. And when we did that, I assume that the remainder of the money we would use would be monies that I think most equally may pass the Metro Bond, assuming that the money was going to be used for. I think it would be nice to secure property that creates connectivity with open spaces that are, that are already existing, or I could say, so that, uh, we can create perhaps a mupland habitat where, where we have some destroyed, uh, ownerships of, of open spaces and so forth. So, this, this is a priority that I would like to see. I do have a question on this. Uh, I know I've seen this before. I probably should have brought it up. I do know that the city commission, uh, together with the Parks, uh, Park and Rec Advisor Board went to look at two of these sites. I, I don't recall the Holcomb Creek watershed. Uh, did he take a look at something there too?
I, I don't, yeah, we went, yeah. It was, uh, off of Redland Road. We went out, we went out for a little, little path pally and looked at some of the tunnels.
Okay, that's right, that's right. Okay. The point is that these, these monies were derived out with no notion as to what the cost of lands would be. I mean, it was just a way of figuring out how to divide all areas. I think that we, we thought should be given priorities to. I think for you, this is a good priority of this, but from a, a practical standpoint, I, I don't think we can make purchases from all these three areas. And but as I said, we could have focused on an area where we actually did get the maximum benefit in terms, in terms of natural habitat.
I, Commissioner Neely, I agree completely. The, um, concern is really with those, what, you know, in relative terms, that those are minimal dollar amounts to use towards acquisitions that will really have any significant impact. And that's exactly why, what you just said is why when, when Metro created the flexibility in the I G A to allow the, the local jurisdictions to, to be flexible and to make changes along the way is exactly the reason. Because we had to, we had to act pretty quickly. If you remember when this was getting put together, they were asking us for quick turnarounds on developing a list of priorities. And they did that understanding that, hey, when, when it comes time to spend these dollars, so long as it meets the, the, the major criteria, we want, they, Metro wanted the local communities to be able to spend these dollars to the best of what they thought each community could, could use them for. So I think that if we can focus it on something that we can actually accomplish, uh, that, that's exactly what probably what the intention was is to get, they didn't, Metro didn't necessarily care that, you know, we had to have a whole bunch of projects. They just wanted to make sure it was maximized benefit for open space.
We really could have just set one project.
Some communities did, it's, uh, they put it all in one, in one.
And I think that's part of the G, so the bond measure is that local communities got to choose local, um, local projects.
Um, Scott, what I want to ask, um, is you've got on the commission report, you know, a certain number as far as each area. Is, 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 are those dollar amounts, um, constrained to be used only in those areas? Or could all of them, all of the money be used in one area if, if, you know, real estate is opportunistic, I, obviously.
Later of what you said.
Okay.
Yeah. The, that's what, that's, I think that's what I was just kind of talking about is that you, you, the commission as a body can make the decision to reprioritize this and, and take what you have remaining available, the 463,000 and some change. And you can put it towards any one project that's on that list or more than one, or you could even redirect it to a project that's not on the list as long as it meets criteria. But, um, yes.
Uh, Paul, you're starting to speak. Um, not for advocacy though, not for advocacy. Just add information?
Well, okay. My, my, as a landy's sheriff at Lima Neighborhood Association and, and knowing that in fact, what we have is some really valuable lands environmentally and in the watershed, uh, that, uh, particularly, uh, some that are like, uh, on Coffee Creek where we've had floods and we have some lands that are contiguous with, uh, Old Canema Park. In fact, nearly 500 lineal feet of, of contiguous border with Old Canema Park that provides the critical leakages to extend the bluff trail through up into the metro area. And it's in, in critical leakages to protecting water resources coming down Coffee Creek that have no protection up on the bluff. And then they pour down into that flatland. And so all of this area running from Fifth to all the way to Third Avenue, border to border with Old Canema Park that would radically enhance its ability to be a better park than it is. What, uh, uh, and this, I know that the owner of the property is a willing seller. He's decided that it's best in, he's told me personally that he's decided it would be best to be put to park use if the city wanted it. You know, just pay a reasonable price and you've got a reasonable seller. But I would really honestly try to tell you that we have an opportunity and I have read that Metro bond issue and they really want lands like this. It was very specific in protecting of trees and water resources and things like this. And this is exactly the fifth.
Thank you. We.
Thank you.
Canema is number two. So we really didn't need that. Thank you. Okay. Other comments on the, or questions for Scott? So make sure we understand the bond measure and its uses and its flexibility. Okay. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Uh, okay, next and last, I believe, on our list as an agenda, and a very long one indeed, is, um, high speed rail updates. Nancy, Kachar and I and Brett Law.
And Tony.
And Tony Koppel, um, were at the, um, meeting in Leccasweo where, uh, Clackamas County talked about what should be the Clackamas County, uh, aspiration for high capacity transit. Should we be looking at, um, a corridor from Lexington border, Canadian border goes through Oregon? Should we be looking at what the E's are? Um, we're, we're, they're actually talking about the, um, heights, the, the high speed rail that, that nationally we're looking at. Uh, not light rail, but, um, and then what happens in Oregon City. So Nancy's, um, what you determined at the end of the meeting, I think it was a very, very, very good discussion. Um, kind of all of that, but I think we sort of had a focus in this latter, which just came, came as before our meeting tonight, talked about what the, the items that we will be recommending. One of them was that the decision-making on this needs to be inclusive. And right now it was pretty, it's pretty limited to ODOT. And then, uh, secondly, that the project, I don't remember that one. Um, the, that, that we thought that part of being, um, a multi-state corridor could, could possibly work, but that the solutions that probably Clackamas County needed were in short segments and that probably could be, um, solved by spending smaller portions of money on completing those, segments of the frac that, um, meet local. So Nancy, why don't you review some of the other things you've she, the rapid list of questions that consider to be focused on Oregon City that are in your commission report as well?
Yeah, go through your packet. I mean, you submitted those to the county, so they're all aware of it. And in fact, I think that several of them are listed on the list of questions that are in the back of this letter to Air Afterman. Um, and what I did here too was that people are really wanting more choices on schedule for the, um, Lament Valley Passenger Rail. And that there's a big concern about having, um, the process run by ODOT Rail. Not to say we don't, we don't, it's, it's not being disrespectful, but they have a staff of three and they don't really even want to be planners. They're, they're regulators. And so there was the thought of maybe having an independent third party be the manager of the next study, if we get the funding from the federal government to do a more environmental assessment level, environmental impact statement, um, alternative analysis. And there are short-term solutions such as buying more train sets that might be very cost-effective that could provide more, um, like if you didn't want to go down to Eugene at whatever it is, eight thirty at night, maybe you want to go down at nine in the morning. So, things like that. And, um, all in all though, I felt, and, and we did include in, Nancy, I had added to your package of the slideshow that Peterson gave at the meeting. And it was really interesting slideshow. So I encourage you to go through that and just look at it itself tutorial. But, um, again, these are probably just the first steps, but I think Clackamas County wants to, um, get organized and be, make sure that all the voices are heard and come and be a collaborative, um, part of the decision-making for probably what will end up being a short-term higher-speed rail service through Oregon and then a much longer term and bigger vision, high-speed rail for Oregon, Washington, California, and really maybe out to the rest of the state. So we talked about uh, standards and design so that we make sure if we do end up connecting like an interstate system, that we're using the same frac sizes, whatever, all those little details. And what's really most important and what, the reason why we put it on your agenda the last minute was we really feel like it's important to um, keep the commission very updated on this and our public updated on it because it's, um, where does, what is Oregon City's position on this? And we were going to be asked, what is it? And it's important to get going now on that discussion.
And then, uh, that thing will be, uh, uh, any.
It's a C four.
Yeah, it's a C four retreat, which is next weekend?
Uh, no, September sixteenth.
I'll take this next week.
Next week.
Yep. Okay. That one was signed up. There's anyone else? Okay. Um, so it, it will be discussed there. And so I think it's important that now they have our views, um, to be able to represent us in the, in that discussion as well. Um, you know, one of the questions, of course, that we have is the, the public has invested, uh, both municipal and state money in our station. It was part of a, of a statewide vision for the South Metro, um, area of Clackamas County. So what happens with that? Um, it's been, of course, one of the issues, of course, is community specific tracks sharing freight, but what happens to freight, which is also a very important economic, um, engine in our, um, state. So there are, there are many, many different issues and, and no one has really identified the funding for some of these very expensive projects. We expect that it's, that it's going to be another federal infusion into the train system and, um, I think the state wants to be ready to apply for some of those ones. If you recall, we got, the first infusion came and Oregon was really only ready to apply for some projects like, um, reroupping the station, um, Portland.
Portland, right.
And some other.
And some union or some improvements in the, some of the freight yards down in Portland.
But we really didn't have a cohesive state or a ready state policy to be able to invest in, in any of the hard, hard stuff like tracks and, and, um, cars. So.
And before we do so, we want to make sure they're in the right place. And there are a lot of opponents to having it going through existing neighborhoods if we, if we went on the Oregon electric line, which is, um, the other thing that's compelling about, I hope you do look at that, um, four-point presentation because the other things that I found compelling about it was the environmental improvements in terms of greenhouse gases. If we do have an interstate rail system rather than everybody relying on using their cars and to get from here to there. And it almost, it, in Europe, they're building this all over Europe. And that made me think, ooh, gosh, you know, what about the United States and Eisenhower built the interstate system? Maybe it's time for us to really consider that as a serious investment for the country. Not, I mean, not that we can afford it, but the environmental impacts are significant. So I think all in all, it's very compelling.
They are, they are huge. Um, we are also shown a six-minute video, um, of high-speed trains in urban Asia. And with the highest speed, something, it's something, we need a reach speed of three, three hundred fifty miles an hour.
And it's safe, it's safe.
So that's very cool. And our top train speed goes, uh, thirty-five.
Well, I think that's maybe, it's, it's fast in certain areas. I think that's sort of the average in urban areas.
Yeah. Three hundred and thirty, sixty, sixty-five.
Yeah, and not for great, very long, but anyway, there's a little difference there, no matter whether it's sixty-five or.
I wonder how far you want your house sitting on a track at three hundred and fifty.
Well, and the noses of those, if you see them, they must be crazy. They're, they're like an alligator or something. They've got the long nose, very aerodynamic. So if, or any comments on the.
You're going to need to check, check here on the floor.
Oh, yeah, I will. And then I will call on Doug.
Someone's back, um, I don't know, I was, you know, there's a group called Go Twenty-One and they are pressing for legislation, I thought, freight rail. They have a twenty-five percent of money that they invest in freight infrastructure to become as a tax credit. And in the process, it would increase their commitment to, to, uh, to infrastructure. I wrote a letter of support for this legislative motion to, uh, our, our US attorney presented it. And, uh, I couched it in terms that it seems to me that we should be able to work, um, together with our freight rail and rapid rail to improve infrastructure that we have and, and both will. I mean, it's, it, it, what you see is an, an issue for, for, for passenger transportation, but it's also a very.
but it's also a trade as well. I mean, having trucks flow long distances in their delivery system is, is uneconomic for me and as polluting as, 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 as passengers. And uh it, it's, there's really a mechanism. I don't know uh if, if you want to put this forward in the retreat or not, uh but to go ahead and discuss that possibility of looking at ways to work with the freight system, that is, ways that we both can benefit in the process. I could try and find that letter that I sent to Chris Schrader and, and get it to you.
All right, that would be good.
Uh I, I, I think we could think, well, that the only just the box of passenger transportation combined with both passengers on freight. And you know, if you go back into the early part, late later part of the eighteen hundreds or part of the nineteen hundreds, I think in the early part of the nineteen hundreds, uh the major rail systems were very, very involved in passenger transportation. That was the bread and butter of some of them. There were big investments in a rail system in the Yales National Park because they could deliver tourists there and they made money doing it. And the point is that I was kind of dropped by the wayside, uh that it found a few different routes and I'm not suggesting, of course, that, that Union Pacific run the rapid rail, but I think the, I think the shared infrastructure and the improvement of the infrastructure could serve to, to benefit both.
And that was discussed, right? Freight was definitely a piece of the understeering need in Pacific waters, definitely. So other comments for Doc or good of yours? Okay, well, that is all that's scheduled to be counted in the forums for discussion. Any other, is there many history forms?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh well, one comment on that last issue would be that I, I read through the PowerPoint and they talked about consistent uniformation from Clackamas County cities and other municipalities. And it strikes me that at a very minimum, we ought to have some, probably other, some agreements in order that uh cities will be asking for at least a baseline investments that they've already made to somehow be reimbursed and made whole from those investments.
Those are the other city.
Are we the only ones that have made improvements?
Yeah.
Put it on the station.
And we very have it, and.
Yeah.
So cities who think Clackamas County that have made investments.
All right. All those in favor?
I think that's, you know, that's one of, that ought to be our big push. Our big push should be.
Um later this week, in fact, Thursday, uh we'll have our Clackamas County area city managers meeting and we normally have that uh on the hilltop of the Clackamas County facility and this, this time we're making an exception, we're gonna have here at our seat hall to show off what we've accomplished here at this building. We're gonna be talking about a number of things like C four and we do this periodically, you probably are aware of that, but I just wanted to let you know that we'll be working on that this week, talking too about what economic development programs the county has and how they benefit cities and how the cities can access those programs. We haven't done much down here, but I'm gonna, we're gonna keep pressing to find out, you know, what we can do to leverage those resources. Also, Clackamas County is working on a strategic, uh the board has hired a consultant to do a strategic plan and they've been doing a series of focus groups. Some of you have probably been invited to those focus groups. I think they are randomly inviting people and somehow randomly got invited to one of these. And I went last week and um met the mayor of Wilsonville and uh there were a couple folks from special districts and other cities that had been invited to our focus group and uh two people from Happy Valley. And of course, the values of the various communities, like if you look at the values in Happy Valley, they're so much different than the ones in Oregon City. And so I kept trying to make the point that I thought it was important to celebrate the diversity of these different value systems in each of these communities rather than trying to look at us as a homogenous group of monolithic cities that are all one big region. I think we do have to look at ends regionally when they benefit us, but not at this, not at the cost of giving up our identities. So there was a good discussion about it, it was a couple hours, uh and we, we wrote down, they wrote down our comments and then they're taking those to the board. I think the county commissioners have this item on one of the work sessions coming up this week or this week. So if you're interested in their strategic plan, you can watch for that on their website. Uh also, we're gonna be looking at coordinating efforts on connections for bikeway um linkages throughout the county and that's one of the things on our agenda as well. And then a couple of our senior staff have some updates. Uh I'll make one for the chief. He's uh ha- having the citizen police academy starting in September fifteenth, first one, and I think a history of our P D, so that's really exciting. That was such a big success for our police department and other cities where I've worked. So I'm so glad that that's uh up and running. Also, Maudie, do you want to make it, give us an update about the leak at Jackson and what's going on with the?
Sure, just go briefly since we're kind of late tonight. Um I just wanted to let you know that the due diligence period on the Eastham School will be most likely extended into October a little bit because um we've had some difficulty getting all the appropriate documentation together from the school district. So our attorney's working on an agreement there and um I probably will present something to you at the beginning of October after I get all the reports and everything all compiled. And then just to let you know, there was a small roof leak at Jackson campus where our books have been stored. Yeah, they're repairing the roof, but they uncovered like way more dry rot than they ever thought possible. And so in the midst of that, they had some temporary stuff up that when it started raining last week, which they didn't expect, of course, you did, and it, it, and wind, it got windy, so it blew some stuff around and um as far as we can tell, only like, um they got in there like super fast. We did this like fluke that somebody was around and heard it. So we're grateful for that, but only like, um right now, we think that only like two to three boxes of books were um wet and uh wetten, whatever, and uh becoming wet. But we haven't really completed our entire investigation. So what it looks like is that we are, I'm gonna go over uh this week and kind of do a little cleaning up because things got a little disorganized when they were trying to uncover as many wet things as possible. And uh and to your credit, they did not call me that night, I mean, to make me come over. They took care of it themselves, which is amazing. But um we still need to do a little bit of investigation because it's, you know, it, it hit the, the water hit the floor and kind of seeped down under some areas where they might not have. So it looks like at this point that we'll probably end up moving books out of Jackson into Eastham earlier than we planned, but we have beautiful space for it at Eastham, you know, really super dry. Um and so I just wanted to overview to that. It doesn't look like a whole lot of damage, do still, probably some additional work that would have been done anyway at some point in time, but. Any questions, oh boy?
Basically, so that's the bar, super dry. Then also, I wanted to remind you folks that we have our public meeting tomorrow for the downtown circulation study begins here at six P M, unless you're interested. And then I believe Nancy has something you wanted to share with about water, water.
Yeah, um we've been keeping an eye on the trail of Waterburg Park and I've been uh just considering, there's been enough um vegetation in the rock base along the trail there where we feel like um we should have one of um, one of our consultants to go and say that we have a rock called Sandy Gun for Oregon City. Um I can't remember if you've seen it, it's on all these, one of the yards on the end of the road, which is very connected to Stephen's car. Yeah, so he knows very well, he's actually been back to society, um just sort of in a sort of part of overall the star zone. And I was just talking, we sat in a hotel and then when he came in and he said, oh, he's a retired engineer, to bring out, to manage a project engineering, um to look at this setting occasionally along the trail and see if there's something else to do, um to make sure, sorry, I know what it is, I don't know what your concerns might be, and report back to the commission and see if there's anything that uh I'm saying.
Isn't my step rule just changed? Uh definitely?
Right, they have to finish up. So you're in, you're all, you're assessing these risks in relation to keeping the Waterburg Park trail open?
Well, yeah, that's what I was just saying.
What are the risks and what we need to be done to mitigate risks if they are there? And whether, what, what the alternatives are for um what the mitigation would be?
Okay.
Your, like Clackamas kind of reminded me, um Clackamas County annual report that they normally do is scheduled for um noon Wednesday, September twenty-second. Anyone wants to go?
Like the state of the county, right?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten invites to that.
Um. I haven't seen it either, but it's out on, it was announced at Good Morning Oregon City. Um it's been announced at several public places.
September twenty-second?
September twenty-two at noon and I think it's at Abernathy Center. Okay, so, and then uh definitely that's the same day that there is a Vancouver, uh Washington, Vancouver, tour of a water treatment facility, if anybody wants to do that. Um we're leaving, I think it's uh leave at Metro at ten and return at four, something like that. But it's supposed to stay at the art water treatment facility.
Actually, I think it was water treatment.
It's, it's water. Oh, it's, it's, it is in baked water. I know that. But supposedly it's the state of the art um facility that's great one in his community. So if anyone wants to see that, that's another opportunity now. So that's it, any other announcements? All right, you are good.